Welcome to the Planning Commission. My name is Missy Creasy and I am staff for the Planning Commission this evening. And every evening for the Planning Commission. But we are beginning with our annual meeting, which is a little bit different order than our agenda notes. And so for our first order of business for the annual meeting this evening, we will have the election of officers. This is the time of year where that occurs. And Mr. Mitchell, who was the chair, provided a nominating committee and we have a report from the nominating committee, who will provide a slate of officers. And following that, we will call for additional nominations and then proceed to a vote. Ms. Dow will be providing that report.
Good evening, everyone. And me and Jody were on the nominating committee. And we are proud to say that we would love for Mr. Hosea Mitchell to remain the Chair of the Planning Commission. And Mr. Lyle Sola Yates to be the co-chair.
All right, thank you for that report. So we have one round of nominations. Do we have any additional nominations for either position? Okay, seeing none, we can take the opportunity to vote for the slate of officers that we have in front of us. Just as a reminder, that will be Mr. Hosea Mitchell for Chair and Mr. Lyle Sola Yates for Vice Chair. All right, I will go ahead and call that because because that's what we need to do. We will start with Mr. Wohindro.
Oh, an enthusiastic eye. And thank you very much for agreeing to serve to Hosea and to Lyle.
All right, Ms. Dow.
I.
Ms. Green.
I.
Mr. Sola Yates.
I, and thank you, Chairman Mitchell.
All right, Mr. Stolzenberger, are you able to speak at this point?
Yes, I, and thank you both.
All right, and Mr. Heaton, are you still here? Yes, you are. There you are.
With gratitude and enthusiastic eye.
All right, and Mr. Mitchell.
And I.
All right, well, I'm gonna take the opportunity to note that our Chair will continue in his role, Mr. Hosea Mitchell, and our Vice Chair will continue in his role, Mr. Lyle Sola Yates, and I will turn the meeting back over to our Chair.
All right, well, thank you for letting me moderate for another year. I do get kind of hanging out with you guys and attempting to hurt you cats, so thanks. We will now move on to reports from the DIAS. So we'll begin with.
Chairman Mitchell, I ask you a quick question. Do we have to read the state law about how we're on, we're doing a virtual meeting? Is there not something we're supposed to read at the beginning of each meeting?
I defer to Ms. Creasy on that. I don't know.
I don't have that direction. Perhaps Ms. Robertson can send me a quick note on that. And if we need to do that, we'll take care of that. But we'll continue forward until I hear differently.
There was an emergency order that we had to read at the beginning for a virtual meeting. But, okay.
Right. Bill, what's happening at the U?
Well, I think you all know what's happening. Students are coming back, or at least most of them, not all of them. I've heard on the order of 85% of the student body is back in some form or another. Beyond that, and there's, you know, plenty of information on the website about like the testing that's going on and real time information on that. A planning note, I'll just mention there's a BOV meeting over the course of Thursday and Friday with the Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting at eight o'clock, or yeah, eight o'clock on Friday, so bright and early. And they're gonna have on their action items some, the School of Data Sciences and Hotel and Conference Center, both at Ivy Corridor, as well as renovation of a building at the Darden School Smith Hall. And so if you're interested in following that, there is a live stream that you can get to from the BOV website. And that's, yeah, that's about what I have, so, thanks.
And Ms. Green.
I know this, maybe officially it was my last meeting. But I did attend a TJPDC meeting at the end of August where the, there was a vote required for the the funding for rent relief. And so I would ask folks for rent and mortgage relief. So I would tell folks that there, there is money there from, from the CARES Act and things like that. But if your, if your need of rent relief or mortgage relief, please go to the TGA PDC website. And there's a pop up that comes up for you to, for more information. And so there is money there. And it's my understanding that there's still money left at the state and that more money we need, the more money we get supposedly, kind of the best way I know to put that. So that if we need it and we use it, there's more money there for us to possibly to get. So again, I'm just informing the public, if you need this rent relief or this or mortgage relief, please don't hesitate to reach out and go to that website. I also intended with Mr. Mitchell, the Ravenna Steering Committee about the next plans for potentially a bike pad crossing. And after being on that committee for so many years and watching this and being on the Bike Pad Committee for so many years and in watching these potential improvements close to possibly happening, I was elated at what we saw and, and how the TJPDC is moving us along. So for everyone, pay attention because they'll, they're gonna be doing some more outreach, public outreach. And make sure that you are giving your, your input. And with that, I am through.
Mr. Stolzenberger.
All right, so I had one committee meeting this month. It was the Place Design Task Force. So we discussed the tenth ingrady smart scale application plans. And I mean, essentially, there's a lot of concerns that by doing it as a smart scale application rather than a small area plan, it's going to be automobile focused or road centered on that intersection. But the alternative, I guess, is to do a bunch of community engagement in advance, which isn't actually funded until we get funding from the state for smart scale. So we considered a motion to recommend that a small area plan be pursued for the corridor instead. But I think we ended up actually instead recommending that as the consultants for the comp plan do their outreach to people specifically in that area, they throw in a few questions about what their vision for that intersection and that corridor are. So that, you know, instead of a small area plan where we're looking at results, you know, six years down the line for half million or so in expenditure, we can kind of combine or two efforts, keep the smart scale ball rolling and start to get some good preliminary input before the full scale, smart scale engagement comes through in a few years. Because construction wouldn't start until something like 2026 or 28. So that was last meeting. Since then, the Chair and the Vice Chair of Place have resigned. So we have a meeting tomorrow to discuss the future of the Place Design Task Force. I guess, oop, that was my phone. In particular, you know, whether it's, you know, useful in its current form, whether council and the Planning Commission are listening to its recommendations, whether it's actively making recommendations and increasing output and how it should look going forward. And then once that's discussed and decided on, electing new officers to replace the old ones. So that is coming up tomorrow. And if any of you all have any thoughts on the Place Task Force, I'd be eager to hear them because they're looking for the council liaison and me to tell them what our expectations for the committee are. So, so that's the place situation. And then next Tuesday, there will be an MPO tech meeting as well. That, and since the last meeting, I have turned 29. As you might recall, when the comp plan started, I was 25. So I hope I won't hear any wondering from you all about why we struggle to get any engagement, you know, in younger demographics. So that's my report. Thanks.
Reverend Heaton, welcome back. How was your semesters?
So Tuesday, I returned to Charlottesville after two months. Driving out west, I saw a lot of the country. There's a lot more land out west than there is in Virginia, I'll tell you that. So I have been out of town and incommunicado and unplugged from emails and social media for not quite two months, but seven weeks anyway. And it's been renewing. So, but I'm happy to be back and interested to see where we're picking up on this comp plan. And really curious to see how our community engagement and citizen input is gonna work. So I have, I have no report for the last two months.
Well, welcome back. Glad to have you back. Ms. Dow.
Hi, so I attended the CIP meeting last Thursday. So I don't know if I reported the month before or not, but we are now meeting quarterly instead of annually to try to stay ahead of some of the projects that we have been discussing. So one of the big, a couple of the big hot topics that were on our agenda was the Walker Buford reconfiguration. We are still deliberating about the configuration and actually moving forward on it. We voted at this time as a body to table it. And I just want to be clear that we are not tabling it completely and forever. I know this has been a project that has been talked about for the last 10 years. But at this time, we came up to, we came to a consensus that we did not feel comfortable spending $350,000 on a, on a plan that may not work, especially during the times that we are currently in. We do feel like it would be important to get public input again. Because it is, people may not feel the same pre-corona as they do post-corona. So keep your eyes out for that. But like I said, we don't want to, we don't want people to think that we don't want to move forward and it's just gonna be tabled forever. It's just tabled for maybe the next three or six months. Something else that was really a hot topic was also our facilities maintenance update for our school. So they've been using survey 123 to streamline their work orders and the flow of the process. And then we also went over different definitions of what CCS wants and how to clarify that. So we have three new categories. They, they section them as facilities maintenance, capital improvement projects, and then also facility services. And so facility services is something that we voted on is more of a smaller, for smaller projects where they don't necessarily need to go through facilities maintenance to get those things done and can also be done quicker. And that was pretty much most of what our meeting entailed. Thank you.
Mr. Stolzenberger would have been 19 when that started.
It's coming. It's coming.
Mr. Sola Yates.
No report. Everything got rescheduled and shuffled around. Strange time.
Mr. Wohindro.
Well, I've been attending some meetings. The Board of Architectural Review, they did meet on August 18th. There were four certificate of appropriateness, appropriatenesses issued. One was deferred. Most exciting to me was we approved a letter of support for placing the Jackson P. Burley High School on the State and National Register of Historic Places. And so that will be going to the state here in two weeks. The Tree Commission met on August 26th. This was the first time we have met since last March. So we spent a lot of time sort of remembering what it is that we do. Welcoming four new members to the, to the commission and reviewing our mission and the committee structure. Paul Josie did run through a draft of a presentation that will be made to the City Council, the annual State of the City Forest Presentation. And some of the highlights from that include the correlation between low income neighborhoods and city areas with the fewest trees. And the fact that the lack of trees increases the heat sink effect of those areas and also creates more health issues as a result of the greater heat. Recent new developments are not providing the opportunities to provide large street trees in planting beds along the street. There's been a lack of city regulatory oversight of new development construction that's resulted into the damp, the destruction of large mature street trees. And all of these things and others have resulted in a loss of 5% of the tree canopy in a recent 10-year period. And that 5% doesn't sound like much, but that's 400 acres of trees. That's it. Thank you.
Right. So Lisa, the Ravenna meeting, Ravenna meeting, that was the first meeting that I got a chance to, to go to. A very interesting meeting. We should kind of walk through the high points of that. But at the end of the day, there will, there's likely to be some development, some additional development along the Ravenna. But I think the group is very focused on making certain, no matter what we do, we, we protect that environment and make certain that that environment remains a serene place to go and to enjoy the outdoors. So the bike path and the bike, maybe bridges across, a lot of neat ideas. And maybe some development along, along the river. But the, the group seems very focused on protecting that waterway and making it a nice and serene place to, to be. The UVA Master Plan Committee did not meet. And looks like, I mean, it was canceled and I'm not certain when we're gonna meet again. And the reasons for not meeting are obvious. One, the virus. The other is just to cut back on costs, wherever you can't cut back on costs. And frankly, most of the new planning studies that they've been working on, we've already reviewed. So that's a moment we'll meet again, but I'll keep you guys in the loop on that. Alex, he went to the Nupec meeting. That's the UVA Almonte, Charlottesville Land Use Group. And we are working on getting our first biannual report out to you guys. And that document is more of a visionary document. The document talks about what we want to be engaged in, what we want to focus on. And there's a long list of things that we're thinking about focusing on. But we haven't really landed the, landed the boat yet on what exactly they're gonna be. We're talking about stuff like the environment, climate. We're talking about night skies. We're talking about capital lands. We're actually talking about landfill diversion. What we do with construction, demo debris, so things like that. The document that we're working on will create, and hopefully we'll be able to get you something that is a good vision of what we want to do and focus on by the end of the year. The capital budget, looks like we're having a kickoff meeting on Friday. So more report on that in the next couple of meetings. Ms. Creasy.
All righty. So since we now have a settled Chair and Vice Chair, our Chair will be looking at the committee appointments and taking a look and seeing if those need to be shifted. So I will send out the last version of that so folks can take a peek at it. And if you have interest in something, you can share that interest with Mr. Mitchell. In addition, we, we have a new member who will be coming on board. Liz Russell was appointed by council last evening to the Planning Commission for Ms. Green's Chair. She had a prior engagement, but she may join us later in the evening. And she brings to us a preservation background. So that, that'll be a wonderful skill set to have with us as well as just very involved in our current community. So we'll look forward to getting to know her and bringing her on board. In addition, I have worked to update the roster and I realized I hadn't sent that to you all in a while. So I'm gonna have you, send you a draft and have you provide any updates to me. That way we can get a up-to-date roster so that you all have everyone's contact information. And in addition, you all, you receive tons of emails, I know. But there was a message that we received from the Clerk of Council concerning the Boards and Commission meeting that council is holding on October 6th. So all Boards and Commission members have been invited to listen to that discussion. I believe there'll be some opportunity for interaction. We haven't seen a complete agenda yet. But they, they wanted to schedule the time to really focus on something they've been talking about for a while, which was addressing the Boards and Commissions in general and just having a focused discussion on that. So that is something, if, if you've lost that link, let me know and we can get that to you. But if you're able to attend that on March 6th, that would be great. Otherwise, staff continues to mostly work remotely. We have had our first remote site plan conference this week and we have a number that are scheduled to occur. We had pretty good success with the first one, but it was a small one. So good to start with a small one. We've had virtual community meeting. At least one, maybe two for applications that are working through the process. So as I like to communicate, we have a path to get every application through the department at this point in time. And so that, that is a very good thing to have. It, it's a little bit slower on, on some aspects. But it does provide the best opportunity that we can for public input. And, and we have found with the applications we've been working with that we have received a good amount of input from folks. So, you know, in our, in our changed world, we're continuing to move forward. That's it.
Very good, good report. Thanks. I think we are now ready to go on to matters to be presented by the public. So this is the only opportunity that we're gonna have tonight to get input from, from the public. So if you've got anything you want to talk about that relates to the work that this board does, this would be your opportunity to do that. We would like, if you'd like to make a comment about Stribling or the Family Day Home, this would be an opportunity to do that as well. So any comments about Stribling or the Family Day Home would be, this would be where you'd want to do that. So Mr. Rice.
Thanks, Chair. We'll, we welcome all of our attendees to the Planning Commission regular meeting webinar for September 9th. If you'd like to address the commission during this time, please, please click your raise hand icon or press star nine on your phone if you're calling in. We will call on attendees in the order of hands raised. And once we enable your audio, we ask that you please state your name and place of residence. And you will then have three minutes for comment. We currently have 37 attendees and four of them with their hand up chair. Our first is Julie Convasser and Ms. Convasser.
Julie, welcome. And you've got three minutes.
Is it possible to turn on video as well? Hello, everyone? Hello? Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Is it possible to turn on video as well?
Mr. Rice.
No, for attendees, it is audio only. Video is reserved for the panelists.
Okay. All right, well, I was going to try and show you by video the segment of road that has concerned our entire community. I am a member of the Fry Springs Neighborhood Association. I live in Huntley neighborhood and have been a part of meetings with my neighbors along Stribling. And there are a tremendous number of households that are very concerned about the public hazard posed by the current 240 Stribling design. We are for density and the in-building is something that most people in this community do support. What we are very concerned about is the public hazards presented by the cut through onto Morgan Court, which I was gonna show you by video what that would look like here. It's a road that can't even tolerate two-way traffic as it is. And also the turn from Morgan Court onto Stribling Avenue and on to, on to, and, and the dangers on Stribling that already exist. We are aware that the city has been aware for a long time that, that, that Stribling is a dangerous place for pedestrians, bikes and car traffic currently under current conditions. And we understand that the new development will multiply those hazards. And we would like the developers and the city to make a commitment to improvements for public safety along Stribling. That is key. And this entire community from, from, all the way from JPA, Stribling, Huntley, Sunset Avenue, Sunset Drive are organizing to protect our safety on these streets. So we suggest respectfully that the city takes seriously our concerns. There was a traffic study done during the time of COVID on Stribling, which was a very strange time to do it. It did not have its normal traffic and certainly is not representative of the kind of traffic that will be present with the building going on with tractors, contractors, et cetera, driving, and then the residents themselves. So we support the neighborhood development. What we want to see is that every person, including the new neighbors, as well as existing neighbors, can feel safe driving, walking and biking along Stribling Avenue and Morgan Court and Huntley. So please consider what can be done to do to protect our safety. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thanks.
Okay, Chair, next we have Mr. Tom Kogill. And Mr. Kogill, you are on with the commission.
And Tom, welcome. You've got three minutes.
Okay, am I, am I on board here?
Yes.
Good, good. I agree with a lot of what Julie said. Thank you very much, Julie. I know that Morgan Court is not equipped to handle any kind of traffic at all. And Stribling Avenue is certainly not not able to handle a whole lot of traffic. It has a, a huge number of joggers and walkers and, and bikers. And I've, I've run into some close calls myself. I've lived on Stribling Avenue for 20 years. And I, I enjoy it. It's, 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 it's a, it's a very diverse community. It's, it's it's got, it, it's got a little bit of everything. And I'm all for affordable housing. If, if the, if, if the development would like to make it entirely affordable housing instead of 15%, that would be just fine with me. But, but it would be reckless to, to, to overdevelop the site. Talking about 181 units is, is, is on one hand, it's, it's reckless in that it, it would on one hand, it's, it's reckless in that it, it would endanger people on the street. We're, we're not equipped to handle that amount of traffic. And it would be disrespectful really to, 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 to the, the neighbors and the, the neighborhood in general to, um, to, to do it in the way they're talking about, building out right to the, the, uh, right to the street. I think, you know, building, developing to a, a lesser degree with fewer, fewer units and allowing a green space between the street and the development, you know, maybe sort of a, a neighborhood park would, would be much more, um, respectful to, to the, to the environment and to the, to the social environment. But, but for me, the biggest issue is safety on the street. It, it's, it's paramount. And, and if, if injuries happen, I, I, I just, I just hope you all take this into account, uh, in you, in your planning. Uh, thank you.
And thank you.
Okay, next we have Mr. Paul Josie. Paul, you are on with com- commission.
Welcome. And you've got three minutes. And I think you're on mute. I need to unmute your mic.
All right. All right. Thank you. My name is Paul Josie and I'm a representative from the Charlottesville Tree Commission. And, um, I'm not actually going to talk a lot about trees. I will note that this site has eleven acres of mature canopy and is one of the few sites that is directly on the Moors Creek. And it has, and, and there's a very, a site with a lot of steep slopes. And the Huntley development is the development next door to this that actually precipitated the street, the steep slopes sort of concerns in the city about, you know, pollution into our waterways. So there's a significant concern that this development, which by right would be forty-six units. But this is actually proposed at a hundred and seventy units. So we're actually giving away development rights for a hundred and twenty-four additional units to this developer for this site, for a highly dense site, which would be a dense site on a level property. But this is a, this is a highly sloped, that the actual roads are graded at fourteen and a half percent. So this is a steep development that's being proposed here, um, in a, in a very sensitive wooded area right on the watershed. And what is being proposed, even though their description of it describes it as, um, preserving the site's existing Sylvan character in their narrative, it does nothing of the sort. Um, it is removing a significant amount of, of canopy and impacting steep slopes in this area. So there's concern about the density being proposed. That's the first point. The second point regarding the density being proposed, the current street of Stribling Avenue has about a hundred and eighty, uh, to a two hundred household units. This development would almost double the number of units and it's located at the very end of Stribling. This is an island location. This is, um, from a walking standpoint, it's a forty-minute walk to the nearest grocery store. It's a twenty-five minute walk to the nearest park or playground. It's twenty-five minutes from, um, UVA buildings at Alderman and McCormick for the classroom buildings. It's a twelve-minute walk to JPA Fast Mart, the nearest convenience store. And a twelve, a thirteen-minute walk to the nearest bus stop at Frye Spring Station. This is not a close walk location, um, to, to justify this density. So, and finally, the Stribling Avenue itself is a street that has no sidewalks. They, the city has looked in the past at what it would cost to add sidewalks and to move utilities, add stormwater drains, and it is in the millions. And so what the developer is proposing, a five hundred thousand dollars, um, cost, you know, into the project, which would really buy very little actual infrastructure for this very dense, uh, development at the, on a very, um, very unsupportive street. So we just support you. If you're going to, to move ahead with this, we support a lower, um, density, but also importantly, protecting the safety of, um, our waterways as well as our pedestrian infrastructure. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, next up we have Mr. Jason Halbert. Mr. Halbert, you are, uh, on with commission. You have three minutes.
Jason, welcome.
Thanks, Jose. Thanks, commission for having this and letting the public speak during your work session. And speaking as the co-president of the Neighborhood Association in Frye Spring, uh, I obviously live in Frye Spring. The Neighborhood Association is drafting a letter. I mentioned this on the developer call last week. It's, it's a six-page letter. As you can imagine, we've got many cooks in the kitchen and so we're almost done. We'd hoped to have it to you today, but it's not quite ready. There's some minor disagreement over some points. But I, I want to highlight what we voted on already and, and really encourage you to look at the letter once we send it. And then also come out to Stribling Ave. And in the letter, we invite you to come for a walk and we're going to try to arrange these for you and city counselors. Cause I think if you haven't been there, I know many of you have, but if you haven't, you'll immediately see what what everyone has been saying about the city. We did a, uh, neighborhood survey for capital improvements. And this was our number one priority. And so since then, uh, the neighborhood board and, and leaders and, and me, we've been advocating to you and the city council for inclusion of Stribling improvements in the CIP. It's been left on the editing room floor each year. So it's never made the cut. We don't quite understand why. Obviously limited funds and, and things like that. As, as I've said to Dr. Richardson, uh, it's fine if we need to get in line and stand behind a number of other projects that are higher priority. We would just like to know where we are and where things stand. So as, as we see at this development, we want density. We want more affordable housing. We, we recognize the history of exclusionary racist zoning policies and, and we want to correct these problems. In order to do that, council and the planning commission need to marry their commitment to these, uh, you know, laudable goals with a proper, safe street. And you can't, you can't have it other, the other way. You can't just plop a giant density, dense development down in the back in the woods of the end of the street and not improve the street. I think you all get this. You're smarter than I am. So the letter will come this week. Um, we hope you'll, uh, take a look at it and we hope to see you out on Stribling Avenue very soon. And we, we encourage you to deliberate long and hard on this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Okay, next up we have Mr. Derek Stone. Uh, Mr. Stone, you are on with the commission and you have three minutes.
Welcome, Derek.
Thank you very much. Uh, well, it's actually Derek and Sharon Stone and we are down at the end of Stribling on Nob Hill Circle. We are, we're down with the island. Um, and there have been some great points made. So I won't, uh, repeat a lot of them, but I'll make a couple of points I haven't heard yet. Uh, one is that the Stribling road is at capacity. Actually, I think the walk would be a great idea, but really nice if we could send you some pictures or something. So it's kind of got a problem that should already be taken care of for safety reasons, as Mr. Cogo mentioned. But, um, you know, isn't for some reason, uh, and we're going to make, you're going to make the problem worse. Additionally, um, I, I also support personally the, um, adding low-cost housing. That is a critical problem in this town. But it's kind of at odds with the, the fact that it's an unsafe setup. So there's a conflict between adding low-cost housing and putting it here. The other thing which we'll point out, which we, we haven't mentioned, we haven't heard mentioned at all is at the end of Stribling is Stribling Extended, which is a little dirt road that was partially paved. And that is, um, aggressively single lane and it is, uh, it was paved, uh, just a few years ago and there's substantial erosion that's produced on either side. I don't personally know the story of who decided to pave part of that, but, um, you definitely can't fit two cars on it and you can't have a hundred and eighty additional houses driving on it. You can't, you can't pass, uh, somebody on it. Uh, so you see that as a potential substantial problem in addition to the, um, just general safety. Uh, anything else we should mention?
I just wanted to mention that Stribling Extended that Derek is talking about will be used as a shortcut from Fontaine for anybody getting off sixty-four and coming home to this proposed development.
Yeah.
They would use that bottom road, Stribling Extended, and it's not set up for that kind of traffic.
It always has like tailgaters during football games and stuff. So old timers know about it. We've been here since two thousand and six and, uh, the traffic is steadily picked up and, um, adding you, somebody earlier said doubling, but I think a hundred and eighty, give or take, units would be, um, triple the number of cars probably. Anyways, um, thanks for giving us a moment to give us your two cents and I, uh, give us our two cents and I, I really think you should come and take a look.
Very good. Thanks.
Okay, next up we have Mr. Martin Quarles. Mr. Quarles, you're on with the commission. You have three minutes.
Martin, welcome. And Martin, you'll need to unmute. Martin, you are muted there. Uh, there we go. Yeah, you're good.
Okay, thanks. Well, I raised my hand early when you said there was four people in line. I just went ahead and did it. I don't have prepared notes. I was part of the community meeting last week where a number of us spoke. I've been also part of a onsite community meeting that we held, uh, Saturday, a week and a half ago in the neighborhood. Talked about this in person with, uh, Frye Springs residents and other interested parties. And I think there's fairly unanimous agreement. And I will, I will not reiterate everything that's been said prior to me joining the conversation because you've heard it already, the unsafeness, et cetera, et cetera. I just started reading the, uh, Tree Commission report on this and regrettably, I haven't gotten very far into the Tree Commission, but I know that at least one member of the Tree Commission is, I believe, on the Planning Commission, Mr. La- Laendro. And another member of the commission has spoken tonight, Paul Josie. And just in the first paragraph, it says approval of the rezoning application for this site would grant excessive development rights for an isolated, unconnected location that does not justify such density. And it talks about the two thousand eighteen comprehensive plan mentioning this as low-density development. And they said this would be a dense project, even if, even were this a level site without a mature forest. But in fact, the site is very steep and completely forested, thereby magnifying the negative impacts. So I, I think there's a really strong sentiment in this part of the city to, uh, say this is too much and it's in the wrong location. And I won't say anything else. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Martin.
Okay, and next up we have, it looks like Derek Stone had his hand up from before. I will lower that. Ms. Catherine Brewes. Ms. Brewes, you're on with the commission. You have three minutes.
Welcome, Catherine.
And I think we just lost Catherine. So, well, there, she just raised her hand again. So I will enable your audio. Catherine, you're on with council. You have, or commission, you have three minutes.
Welcome, Catherine.
Perfect. Thank you. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Wonderful. Um, thank you so much for, um, meeting with us this evening and hearing our concerns. I, I would say I don't want to beat the drum, but at the same time, I've worked in higher education for fifteen years with student success and access. And I think beating the drum is the only way to make sure that the point is proven when it comes to safety and access on Stribling. You know, I, with, that this community certainly supports the affordable housing. I think fifteen percent of a hundred and eighty is actually kind of low from a commitment standpoint, but, uh, just my humble opinion. I, I recently read an article here and what would be, I think, the daily progress with another community property in the county of Charlottesville, but also with the same, or county of Albemarle, but with the same builder. And it seems like five hundred thousand dollars just seems to be their lip service to making money off of building housing. And that's what they proposed for this, uh, breezy hill development in eastern Albemarle. And that was recently, I believe, either stalled and/or, um, denied by the county of Albemarle just because it wasn't the right fit. So I'm a, I'm a dog mom of three fur babies and we're expecting our first little one in January. Walking on Stribling now is scary and it's, you know, we, we bought in the city of Charlottesville for access and we have two cars, right? And we have the, the ability to move around as we need, but there will be people at the end of that road who don't have that ability. I think seventeen minutes is, you know, probably a good estimation of how long it takes to get to a bus stop. And that was prior to me, you know, waddling down Stribling with three dogs. So I, I really just, I would hope that if we're going to have this commitment in Charlottesville to better our city and to better our access, that we really put the resources behind it, right? Just like in higher education, you want to bring in diverse students? Let's give them scholarships. Let's do X, Y, and Z. This is the same thing. It's just a different topic, right? So, uh, we will, as a community, continue to have this conversation and we will continue to bring this to you with the hopes that you will listen to us and support not only our community, but our new neighbors at the end of Stribling. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Catherine.
Okay, next up we have John Marshall. Mr. Marshall, you're on with the commission. You'll have three minutes.
John, welcome. And you'll need to unmute.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yes.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for having this meeting. My name is John Marshall and I'm a property owner on Stribling Avenue. You heard from the Neighborhood Association Board that the community supports this development as long as that Charlottesville or the developer widens the road. I want to say that this is absolutely not true. The entire community resoundly disapproves of this proposed development. My neighbors and I are flabbergasted and frankly appalled that the association is saying that we are for this development. Last week, the developer had a community meeting, which had a lot of attendees and absolutely everybody was firmly against this development. I don't understand why the association is saying the community is okay with the development. We are not. The meeting last week was recorded and I highly encourage you all to watch it. You will see person after person speak out against this development. Also, the proposed development is not by right. The area is currently zoned as low-density. Charlottesville's own land use map has this slated for low-density. And again, the community resoundly disapproves of turning their neighborhood from low-density to high-density, uh, especially given that Charlottesville's own future land map, uh, has it slated that way. Also during the meeting, the developer claimed that they've proposed to the commission a by-right development, a neighborhood, if you will, and that the commission responded to them that they should do high-density development instead. I'm wondering, first of all, i- if this is true, and if it is true, I, I would really like to understand why the planning commission would encourage high-density when the city's own plan has it slated for low-density. So if, if anybody from the commission could add some color to that, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, John. We, at this point, we won't get back and get into any back and forth with you, but we will be happy to, uh, chat with you offline about that. Mr. Rice.
Okay, next we have Mr. Kevin Flynn. Mr. Flynn, you're on with the commission and you'll have three minutes.
Kevin, welcome.
Hello, thank you. Um, I just wanted to reiterate the points that others have brought up, um, just concerns I have with this project. The existing condition of Stribling Road has no sidewalks, no bicycle facilities, and there is a very high volume of pedestrians and cyclists for any road, but especially one without proper facilities for them. Um, and an additional, about a hundred eighty additional u- units at the end of the road would obviously add to that. And so if this is going to move forward, we really do need to have the proper facilities to accommodate that. Uh, additionally, the road has hazards for motorists. The site distances are very low in certain places. The width varies as you go along. Um, these things are obviously made worse by having to share the road with cyclists and pedestrians who are dodging cars and These things are obviously made worse by having to share the road with cyclists and pedestrians who are dodging cars and cars are dodging them and everyone. It's a, you know, sort of a little ballet that we have that works for now, but it's really not ultimately safe. It doesn't really fit VDOT's guidelines for pedestrian facilities or psych, bicycle facilities or even roadways for that matter. Um, additionally, I'm concerned about the capacity of the intersection at Stribling in JPA. Uh, this is functionally a, a dead end roadway. There's no other outlet from the far end of Stribling because Stribling Extended Just isn't functional for 99% users. Uh, and the, the existing intersection is over capacity right now. It backs up a lot during the peak period in the morning. Um, and if this project moves forward, that needs to be addressed as part of it. And just as a conclusion, I'm just kind of concerned about the level of density for what is ultimately the dead end of a road. Um, for a dense network to function healthily, like, you know, the, the downtown mall is a great example. You can approach that from 100 different directions and get to it. And that's what makes the density work. But in this case, there's really only going to be one primary access point. And I just question whether or not that is the wisest use of this, uh, land. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Ms. Margot Smith. Ms. Smith, you are on with the commission. You will have three minutes.
Welcome, Mark.
Hi, thank you. Um, my name's Margot Smith. I live at 237 Stribling Avenue and I've been here for 12 years. Um, I will also reiterate what others have said about this location at 240 not being suitable for high density. And I think a lot of that has to do with, um, the distance of services and the need for people to walk the whole length of the road. But what I wanted to weigh in about right now, which other people haven't spoken so much about, is the impact on of the steep slopes and the runoff on Morse Creek. And, um, if you do come to visit the property, which I hope you will do, I would ask that you walk all the way around the property down to Morse Creek and you see what's happening down there. And in particular, you could look at the back end of the Huntley subdivision. And what I'd like to say is that when we moved here in the first few years that we lived here, there was a beautiful beaver meadow down there. And since then, it has become a swamp and that is because of the runoff of water. And it, it's just, you know, I fear that the same thing is going to happen. And what we've seen is with the heavy rains that we've had a number of times, that small creek, Morse Creek, just can't really handle the water that's coming in from two different sources. And it just gets swamped, you know, to the detriment of the little bridge, the pedestrian bridge that connects Sunset and Sunset Extended, which was like chock full of trees and limbs a- after a major storm a couple of years ago. So, you know, this is a, um, an ecological area that I think is at risk. And I also think that, you know, having swamp lands behind these developments also puts people at risk. You know, they're, they're mosquito breeding grounds and they're, um, really not, you know, pleasant recreational areas like paths through the woods as, as have been talked about or planned. And, you know, I, I just, I don't think that's what Huntley had in mind when they planned that. But look what's happened because of those slopes and the run, runoff and kind of the improper direction of water. So I hope you look at that as part of this plan. Because we really appreciate the, the green space in the neighborhood right now. And, you know, the, the way that the neighborhood has, you know, really been suitable for people of all incomes, uh, students, as well as people who live here and are homeowners. And we worry a lot about what this overdevelopment of this property will do for our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Morka.
And next we have Mr. William Abrahamson. Mr. Abrahamson, you are on with commission and you have three minutes.
William, welcome. You'll need to unmute your mic.
Thank you very much, um, uh, to everyone. Yes, William Abrahamson, I live at 123 Stribling Avenue. I'm also with Jason Hallbride, co-president of the Frye Springs Neighborhood Association. I'll be speaking to both those hats tonight. First of all, I'd like to thank you because, you know, the commission, this commission is one of the places where policy meets common sense, uh, sometimes to frustrating effect. Uh, but this is where our policy really gets haggled out and I thank you for working through that with us. And with that in mind, it, I mean, we've been trying, as a board, I've been trying to keep, keep in mind the metrics information that you have at hand. You know, by law, what, how can you read this P O D? Obviously, on the traffic note, uh, Mr. Duncan conveyed one of the traffic reports that, just today, traffic reports provided by the applicant. It, you know, it, it makes the assertion, um, that the traffic pass will, that traffic will not be impacted excessively, that the, it documents things like stop sign away time will increase by 25 seconds. No one here is concerned about that. We are concerned that at that stop sign, there's also a baby carriage or a stroller, a bicyclist, a teenage driver. The cross country, UVA cross country team are all in that same spot at the same time. The traffic study makes no accounting for bike and pedestrian infrastructure at all. And now I would posit that that should be a rec, a prerequisite for any further applicant, progress of this application. We know the bike ped committee can make comments, but those comments are not necessarily binding. Also, the planning commission has a comprehensive plan that was developed and can, it was, was done for a reason. It took into account existing infrastructure and planned outlays. Density has been projected in certain areas and none of the other areas for a reason. It's not that it couldn't go there, but it's not there yet. But if that's the case, how is, how can the infrastructure be funded? Planning Commission cannot write, cannot create the budget. It cannot write checks. How do we as residents have trust that the city council would follow, that, that the city, uh, council and, and operations would follow through with any assertions that, that this infrastructure will be funded? I would support the, um, planning commission in their previous statements that they don't want to approve density haphazardly within the absence of an approved zone, uh, updated comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance. You have said that in public in the past. I would just, I would, uh, hope that you guys keep with that tonight. Stick with the plan. And to that end, at the end of Stribling in JPA, there's, uh, three total parcels for just over two acres. Um, one of the highest and best uses of that parcel at this time is parking cars on football games. So a dozen, a dozen Saturdays out of the year, um, you know, pays the rent for, for that, for that.
Respect, I'm gonna need you to begin.
Sure, sure. You know, that's naturally affordable housing. That's great. However, if the developer wanted density where the city says it wants density, they could buy up two acres with four purchases and, and put density. So the market has a mechanism. The planning commission does not have to break apart its plan.
Thank you, William. Thank you very much.
Okay, next, uh, we have Ms. Sarah Ratcliffe. Ms. Ratcliffe, you are on with the commission. You have three minutes.
Sarah, welcome.
Thank you for taking comments. Um, I'm Sarah Ratcliffe and my family lives here on Morgan Court. Um, I think a lot of people have raised some really good comments. There's just two things I wanted to highlight. One is, um, I feel a little like this density is putting the cart before the horse. There is a lot of evidence of how poorly areas have been developed when there's no infrastructure to support the density that is being planned. And the long-term consequences of that on public health and safety outcomes. Um, and this development would fit into a lot of those parameters of increased density without any of the infrastructure to support that level of density already in place. And as people have expressed, this has been a long-term problem such that I don't necessarily have the confidence that the city would actually put that infrastructure into place after the development is already here. The second point I just wanted to make is to encourage you all to come out and have a look that maps don't give the whole picture. We are recent transplants to Charlottesville and we've actually been living in the area for a year, about a year now in this particular part of Charlottesville. And one of the attractions for us was on a map. It looked like it was really easily walkable to my work at UVA um, and to some other places we would want to go to. And then the reality, having lived here, it's that, um, we went down to one car prior to moving here. And I am fortunate that my husband can actually drop me at my office in unusual hours to dodge the traffic buildup and because there were multiple times in the first month when I almost got hit by cars, even on the JPA pedestrian crossing. So the safety does, is not reflected in what you may think on a map. And so I would just like to re- reiterate the comments to come out and actually view what it's like. Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much.
Okay, next we have Ms. Marilyn Swinford. Uh, Ms. Swinford, you're on with commission. You have three minutes.
Welcome, Marilyn. And you're muted.
Okay, again, I'm Marilyn Swinford. I've lived at 122 Morgan Court for 12 years. And I concur wholeheartedly about the statements that have been made about Stribling Avenue. You can't pass two cars and even one pedestrian on the street at the same time. And so that has its own set of issues and I think you're coming to understand them. I'd like to talk about Morgan Court because this is a street that is inordinately narrow. It's 30 feet wide. It snakes up, um, and it curves and up a hill. Excuse me, don't know what that was up a hill. And we have 36 homes planned for this street. It's not a little stub of the street with six houses. As many of you know, we have a substandard intersection. We had cars on the high side, back down their driveways on a hill through parked cars on a curve pulling out. Uh, our street is not suitable to put more traffic on it. Now, I understand that at one point the fire marshal, I know he came down, made us stop parking on both sides of the street. But I also understand that Morgan Court was not, this is under designed for its current usage per the fire access codes. And so especially if that is the case, we don't have any business trying to take more traffic on our street. And I, I do believe that looking at fire access and, and capacity of parking and moving vehicles within sites is something that I was hoping that it was lessons learned from Huntley. When I look at 240 Stribling, I think how are those moving vans going to get in? How are some of those little stub streets heading to the townhouse with the access for delivery and service vehicles in and out? It's too tight and it needs absolutely not to come through Morgan Court because we already have our own issues and we have no capacity to take on additional traffic through our neighborhood. Totally inappropriate to do so. And best speaking to the comp plan, I think there should be an update to the comprehensive plan before this rather urban zoning is put in. And also the city needs to step up. Uh, Stribling hasn't had any improvements for 40 or more years. And of the money that you get out of the residents who live here is probably up to half a million dollars a year. Have you taken any of that money to, uh, set aside for road improvements or to support for road improvement bonds to help with the, um, the flow and of the street and the pedestrian safety? The city has not prepared itself for this development and this urban side, this urban plan is premature because of that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and next up is Mr. Ryan Yager. Mr. Yager, you're on with the commission. You have three minutes.
Welcome, Ryan.
Good evening. Uh, thank you. And behalf of the applicant, I would like to speak on the proposed Chick-fil-A at Berks Road Shopping Center that's currently slated for the consent agenda in order to bring clarity for something that was discussed in the pre-commission meeting. In regard to the final condition as part of the, the approval here, I would like to just ask for flexibility. I believe staff has the best intention in mind. However, I asked for the opportunity to install our currently proposed fixtures that meet the approved zoning ordinance standards. Uh, we have provided a photometric plan that meets all city code. And as such, we've demonstrated that we hold the safety of the workers, patrons and general public at utmost importance. However, myself and the applicant have concerns of agreeing to as a formal condition, adhering to changes from future reasonable public complaint without a definition or standard as to what that reasonable, um, complaint is. To be clear, that's not to say that we're trying to not be reasonable in the future. We definitely consider ourselves to be reasonable. However, the standard currently in place for the city to decipher if a complaint is reasonable in the, is the zoning ordinance, which we currently meet all of the standards. We also have community standards with the landlord. We are trying to meet, ensure, to ensure a cohesive lighting approach with the overall Berks Road Shopping Center, um, while also continuing to ensure that all city standards are met. Uh, so therefore in summary, I would just like to ask again to allow us the right to address future concerns on an as-needed basis with city staff and not mandate all fixtures to be dimpled from the start, nor condition us, uh, to revise any fixtures that have subjective nature of public comment. So lastly here, just, my preference is to stay on the consent agenda, however, to remove the last condition. Um, however, um, at a minimum, if you do not agree, um, I would prefer to pull from the consent agenda to allow time to discuss during the regular agenda if possible. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chair Mitchell, currently there are no more hands raised, but I will ask if there are any attendees with us that would like to rate, address, uh, commission, please raise your hand, click the raise hand icon, or if you're joining us by phone, press star nine. And we do have a phone caller with their hand raised. And you are on with the commission. You have three minutes.
And please state your name and address. And you're muted. You remain muted. Mr. Rice, is anyone else?
There is nobody else.
All right, I'm going to give the muted person one last chance to state their name and address. But you'll need to unmute to do that.
And Mr. Rice, do you have the ability to unmute them?
I have the ability to ask to unmute. And I have done that. We do have one other person with their hand up. Uh, this is Erica. Erica, you are on with the commission. And for that phone caller, if you would still like to, we will come back to you to see if you can unmute yourself at a later time. And Erica, you are on with the commission.
And Erica, what is your full name, please?
Uh, yes, thank you for, um, taking this question that I have. So, um, earlier. I'm sorry, uh, Erica Williams.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Um, you know, earlier, uh, one of my neighbors mentioned that Southern Development informed us, uh, that they were interested in low density for 240 Stribling. But, um, again, uh, the, the commission, um, encouraged them to do high density. And I know you deferred that question. I, I'm just curious, when will, when will that question, uh, be addressed? Because I think that's a very imperative question and I didn't want it to, um, just sort of be, uh, bypassed. So when, when will that question be addressed?
Ms. Creasy, could you give me a little guidance on the, um, best answer to that? I might, my, my thinking is that we will, we will have a greater dialogue in a few minutes with the, uh, the applicant, but when will, um, will the public be allowed to more input into that?
So, um, there will be, um, if, if this is an opportunity for a work session for the commission and the applicant at this point. Um, and so if it were to move to a next stage, um, it would be scheduled for a public hearing. Um, and if it's scheduled for a public hearing, then there's the opportunity for, um, for dialogue along the way. This item has come forward before. It was in a different format. Um, and so, um, it might be helpful. Uh, it sounds like folks have, have viewed that, um, as well. And, um, you know, it may be that some of the dialogue that occurs, uh, through this work session, um, assist in answering. assists in answering questions that the community may have. But you know, that that would be the opportunity.
Mr. Rice.
Sorry, Chair. Yeah, we have our phone caller back in line. And I'm going to remind the phone caller that star six is to unmute. So I am enabling your audio now.
Hello, thank you so much for your patience. This is Cabal Marshall and we own 239 Stribling. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to hear the whole meeting, but I would agree with the folks. I have heard recently that the street is not able to handle that additional traffic. One other matter that I haven't heard discussed is some confusion, some conflict actually, between what was presented by the developer on the materials sent out. And the, there was not a full picture of the streetscape of the main entrance on Stribling included in the packet. Subsequently, we have gotten one, but it shows a setback from Stribling of roughly, it's hard to judge, but somewhere between 10 to 15 feet maybe. I noticed that on the plat, it requests a zero setback from Stribling. And I would imagine that they would at least give us a sidewalk. But if that's approved, they could build their building right next to the sidewalk, which would be totally out of keeping with the architectural character of our neighborhood. The surrounding houses have a setback of at least 50 feet, some of them 70 feet into the four on either side and across the street from the development, the PUD. So with the conversation about in an emergency that we may need to get fire trucks in and out, I would highly recommend, both for architectural reasons, but also for safety, that they need to have, go along with the existing setback for structures so that a fire truck would have space to maneuver. There's no way a big fire truck could make the turn if there's no setback. But also in the guidelines that were buried, actually you had to go online to get them. I think it's number six and number eight, talk about the appropriateness, the harmonious nature that the PUD is supposed to fit in with the existing neighborhood. So I do hope that this is noticed and stopped so that the developer will start his building back in keeping with the existing houses. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rice, what's up?
Okay, and we have Mr. Michael McCann with his hand raised and Mr. McCann, you're on with the planning commission. You will have three minutes.
Michael, welcome.
Hi, yeah, I'll keep this brief because I know everyone else has said the same things that I would say. Candidly, I don't have much of a dog in this fight because I will be moving in the next year when my wife finishes school. So I don't have the longevity of some of these other people. But as someone who lives in the community and runs in the community and walks my dog in the community, I just want to, you know, kind of confirm where I was saying that that street, Stribling there, you can't really go up and down that safely at the current volume of traffic. I can't imagine adding additional cars, especially with the blind hill as it gets on towards nighttime. That just is inherently unsafe as it is currently. Adding any more volume without any improvements would be possibly catastrophic. So that's all I wanted to add, just kind of make sure that gets foot pounded a couple more times.
Thank you very much.
Okay, there are currently no more hands raised. And I just wanted to confirm, Chair, that this is the only matters of the public portion of the meeting, correct?
Yes.
And if you'd like to address commission at this time, please raise your hand by clicking the raise hand icon or star nine if you're calling in. And there are no other hands.
All right, with that, we will lose the public comment section and move on to the consent agenda. Is there, is a, or are there motions relating to the consent agenda? Mr. Silliet.
I have a motion. I moved to approve the consent agenda with one change to the minutes. On pages 16 and 19, the motion should read "in all zones" instead of "and all zones." Small but important.
Good. Nice. We, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second. Second.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved in probably second to all of them.
I. And into the motion.
I.
Hold on, wait, pray have you been, pray I asked for that minutes ago.
Yeah, well, but so during the pre-meeting, we thought there was no objection to the conditions. Now that we're hearing there are objections to the conditions, I'd just like to propose that we change, the owner will address any reasonable public complaints with, the owner will address any reasonable public complaints with the concurrence of staff.
Right. Is the commission willing to accept the second amendment?
Sorry, can you repeat that just one time? I apologize. I was being distracted.
Yeah, just replacing any reasonable public complaints with any reasonable public complaints with the concurrence of staff. Staff will have to agree that the complaint is reasonable and needs dealing with.
I'm comfortable with that. Yes, I can make that change.
And likewise.
I think that's responsive. Yeah.
Ms. Green.
I would certainly hope that this applicant would be responsive. But there's a reason why some of these things are put into the, to the conditions. And so we've obviously heard that, that there have been some problems. We have lighting issues, stronger lighting so that you light up the night sky does not sell more chicken sandwiches. So I would just like to, you know, as you guys go along, you need to think about the overall picture, not just this one business owner. There's an entire community around this neighborhood. The community that will be affected by this particular area is on a hill and it is residential.
All right, what I'm going to recommend, what I'm going to recommend is that we take this out and we have a discussion about this at the end of the meeting. So let's, let's pull this from the consent agenda.
So move.
Okay, right. So we have a motion to amend the minutes. Is, there's been, it's been second. Do we approve the, do we approve the amendment to the amendments? I mean, the minutes.
I.
I think so.
Any objections? Just to the amendment of the minutes.
Oh, just to the minutes. Okay.
Yes. So all in favor?
I.
Any objections? There are three other items on the consent agenda. Let's take them one by one. Kappa, kappa, gappa. Do we approve that?
I.
Oh, David.
I.
I.
The site plan for Chick-fil-A. Is that the one we're moving?
Yes.
No, no, we're pulling the ERB.
ERB.
Okay, okay. So is there a motion to approve the site plan?
So move.
Second, all in favor?
I.
Any opposition, any abstentions? All right, and we've agreed to move the ERB. All in favor of moving the ERB?
I.
I.
Actually, I think we don't need to vote on that. One person can do that. So cool. All right, it's been moved. All right, so at the end of the meeting, we will review the ERB and the lighting issue. Ms. Chrissy, we have a presentation from Jaunt.
Yes, we do. Mr. Sheffield from Jaunt is going to be presenting this evening. And Mr. Rice has already promoted him. So we'll be turning the time over to him for an approximately 10-minute presentation. And Mr. Winter will be handling the slides for him. All right, Mr. Sheffield.
Thank you. Good evening, y'all. Some of you, I know some of you I don't. So it's nice to see some familiar faces. So tonight I wanted to present and update you on a new initiative that Jaunt is moving forward with that will affect both the city and the county, especially in the urban, urban fringe area. It's a pretty exciting initiative. And anybody who pays attention to public transportation is somewhat familiar with how this is evolving in the US. But we see it as an evolution of what Jaunt already provides. So we can dive right into the presentation. We kept it fairly short just because we wanted to kind of be really succinct in what we're trying to communicate. Do, yep. So on the next slide, we jump right into the information that we wanted to convey. The very first thing is, is that we are making our rounds about presenting this to the various different entities, whether it's with Samuel County or the city of Charlottesville, the Regional Transit Partnership and so on. The goal is to really start the conversation going on this concept because as we're starting to form it, we want to make sure that we're gathering the type of input and direction that's needed to make it work all across the spectrum that we can see it being applied. And so the planning commission actually has a pretty important role that I'll get to at the end of the meeting. But we are trying to make sure people are aware. So you may hear from other sources. Our number one goal is to try to get ahead of any misinformation or incorrect information that could kind of present the wrong idea of what we're looking to do. On the next slide, we, we wanted to kind of get you to understand this concept of on-demand. I joke a lot of times about how the US really struggles with coming up with the right types of labels compared to counterparts in Europe. And in the US, we have something that's already called demand response. And Jaunt is very, pretty much recognized as that type of entity that provides demand response services. So on-demand is very similar, but it takes on a whole new approach to serve in the community. The number one thing is, is that it remains customer focused rather than something like FixRoute is more generalized. It looks at volume versus specialization. And so with on-demand, we, we've kind of focused on three different areas that this is kind of distinguished from typical transit services. One is around connecting people to places. And that really means about not limiting ourselves to certain areas or certain times a day, but actually being able to adapt and change the type of services that are offered based on the feedback we're getting in more real time from the type of requests that would come through some sort of software platform. Another aspect is what it would cost. Right now, both Jaunt and CAT Services are running fare free. And so this is kind of one of those question marks going forward because something like on-demand would really take on a cost scaled approach that is really dependent on where people are going, what purpose, time of day, distance, congestion, a lot of different factors, even the source of funds that might help pay or subsidize those trips. So it initially, this was a fairly easy thing to discuss. But as we move through this fare-free approach to services during COVID, I'd say that I'm getting some questions I don't quite have some answers to. But just know that it's a dynamic structure that allows us to be responsive to where and how things get paid for. One of the other things, and it's kind of just implied with the name is on-demand is the immediate availability. This really changes the, the approach in that with our typical demand response services, people are asked to call at least a day ahead of time. With FixRoute, you're kind of dependent on the schedule that's published. With on-demand, there is that immediate exchange of a request, whether it's just through an app or even a phone call for those who might not have a smartphone. So it's important because that immediate availability and that immediate request will feed into some of the other information that helps us continue to shape and, and kind of repurpose what we're offering to the public. So we're doing all this related or kind of in context of some guiding principles that we've created. And we did that because as we move forward with implementing this, sometimes you can lose sight of why you're implementing something. And so we put this little acronym together. And of course, in transportation, we love our acronyms. And, but it wasn't just by coincidence that it kind of came together. They are pretty sincere approaches. And one is being responsive and not just responsive in the terms of an immediate request, but being responsive to the dynamic needs of the community. And one of the more impactful examples of that is during the pandemic, we're facing, I think, an unprecedented issue with food security. A lot of the food banks and food sources have the resources to provide, but lo and behold, transportation connectivity to those sources don't exist as, as complete as they may need to, to provide that access to food security. This type of platform would allow for us to immediately respond to creating something that those individuals could use to access food security. That type of responsiveness doesn't exist in transit. And that's where this platform really does make some difference. The other is, of course, with Jaunt, where we've always looked at things being inclusive, whether it's through race or disability. We understand the importance of making sure whatever we're offering, whether the service, the platform, whatever approach, we're taking into account the different factors that make it accessible and inclusive. From the dynamic standpoint, you're going to see a slide in a second that really looks at how different applications of this platform can be used to achieve outcomes for the community that really haven't been able to be achieved before. And so it, it really does offer us a whole new approach to offering transit. The one I love the most is the empowering approach. One of the reasons why Uber has been successful and disruptive in the transit industry has been its way of offering that immediate empowerment to the users. They are able to make a request and they know Uber has responded. That's what we're looking to do. We're looking to put that power in the hands of the users to let them feel like they have now communicated with transit about their needs. And of course, the last piece is being safe. Transit is held to a fairly high standard of safety. It's how it goes with the US Department of Transportation. And I think that we'll continue to convey that to passengers even during this time of the pandemic when safety and people's well-being is, is, you know, paramount. So on the next slide, I want to get into just this, what I call convergence of opportunities. So I'll start off with saying that in the transit world, we tend to come across issues or concerns or challenges. And then we go off and look for either a service or a platform or software to help solve our issue. And so as I started exploring into this on-demand concept, I started to realize that the platforms that are out there that are offered actually open up opportunities that we may not even considered. So instead of saying we have this one particular issue we want to solve and what software might help us, we're looking at it from the fact that we have a very versatile piece of software that allows us to address a range of opportunities that really haven't been able to be addressed in a more complete way. And so as you look on the screen, there's, there's a variety of things that we've already come up with. But there's those undiscovered opportunities that I know will start to crop up as we continue to have these public conversations. The very first time I presented this was actually to the Alamo County Board of Supervisors a good while back. I think it was the fall of 2019. And the next night I was at a chamber event and three different people came up to me asking if this platform could help them solve a challenge they had. For example, Rich Skyler with Network to Work approached me and said, hey, could this help me connect people who are looking for jobs to those jobs that transit doesn't currently serve? And my answer was absolutely. Let's talk later. That, that's what we want. We want people to start understanding what we could do and then start kind of connecting the dots to. and then start kind of connecting the dots to, to how we get it done. We're pretty excited about it. So on the next slide, it pretty much just introduced the question of what, what are we looking for with the Planning Commission and how to, you know, pun intended, plan ahead? And that is, when we go to look at implementing this service in certain parts of the city or even going after grant funding, it is important that it's reflected in the planning documents of the city. However, that might be, it's still important. Not necessarily needs to be that the city supports and wants on-demand, but we need to find a way that we can make sure that those that we seek funding from understand that the city does embrace the concept. So we don't quite have any four, exact recommendation right now to change any of the plans for the city, but as the Planning Commission, you're in place to help an entity like Jaunt figure out where this concept might best fit in those land use and transportation planning documents. So hopefully some future discussions, we can better kind of lay that out. And with that, I'll end the presentation and take any questions.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Any comments? Any questions?
I've got a question. So this is my second or third time watching this presentation. And I gotta say, I'm still kind of confused about what Jaunt on-demand is. Is it just the change to being able to request a Jaunt bus in real time by an app or phone call?
So the reason why we continue to refine the presentation is because of the desire to best communicate it in the most clear way. That is a challenge for us because it's a new concept in general for transit, but what Jaunt already performs is very similar to it. So in, in the Charlottesville community, we provide a service that we have yet to find a peer in, in other communities that they provide. And so the leap to on-demand is really just a skip for Jaunt. It's like really just, you know, such a slight evolution. For a place like Richmond, it would be a big change in what they offer already. And so I think the difference would be more profound in that kind of setting than here in Charlottesville. So to answer your question, yes, it's just a evolution in how people can access the services. The, the new aspect of it is it would be opening up this type of service to anybody in any type of partnership that we can form. Because right now in the city, the services Jaunt offers is limited to either somebody who's certified as ADA eligible because of their disability or because of a partnership with a human service agency for, let's say, a Medicaid trip or such. Those are the only two types of trips that we would perform in the city. With this platform, we would expand that to more types of partnerships and opportunities for any type of resident, which is, in my opinion, fairly significant when it comes to any gaps that exist in any other services or, or again, needs that have been discussed in the, in the past. Hopefully that answers your question, but it's, it's one that we're trying to work on, hence the presentations to groups like yours.
I want it now. How long?
It's, uh, it's, it's coming. It's, um, I have a tendency to, to like to jump into the pool and then fill it up with water on the way down. And my staff tend to have to balance me with the more deliberate and kind of, you know, strategic approach and say, we're kind of working through that, that right dynamic. And we're looking at having some of the right staffing to help move the initiative forward that, that hopefully you'll be familiar with, so.
So what feedback have you gotten from CAT and from UTS?
Well, both see the opportunity to create a bridge or connection for those gaps that exist. With, with both, well, I'll stick with, with UTS. They see it as feeding in from the ancillary areas of their services and maybe be even able to meet some needs that don't really get addressed on the off-peak times. With CAT, I think we're fortunate in that early on, there's been conversations, even before I talked about on-demand, about how CAT really expends a lot of resources dipping into neighborhoods and parts of the city that make the services become less efficient than what maybe they could be. And so something like on-demand could help feed into hubs of, of CAT services that then help create that better connectivity. And so I think that's, that's the general response that we got is that they can see how it complements the services and not competes. And that's our approach is that we have no desire to create another competing option. We have a desire of creating these complementing options. To the degree that the concept of on-demand actually goes hand in hand with this concept of unifying all the different modes under one platform to where you as a resident could go from A to B and you would use an app that gives you five different solutions that may be chain linked together, riding a bike share to a bus stop and then riding CAT to another stop and then walking the rest of the way, or riding Jaunt on-demand to a CAT hub and then riding and connecting to UTS. Those platforms pretty much go hand in hand. In Europe, they're referred to as mobility as a service. In the States, we seem to be going through different variations of the terms. Right now, the feds are calling it complete trip. And that's where I think CAT and UTS see the opportunity is to really make that complete trip concept happen.
And the devil's or devil is in the details, a lot of details. Ms. Green, you're the, you're a transit expert. He puts. Am I stuck?
No, I heard you.
And Lisa, you stuck or you didn't? All right, Gary, we'll go to you since.
I hear you.
Lisa, you there? You're on mute. There you go. Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. I don't know what was going on. I was trying to hook up some earphones to this and I don't think, yeah. Um, I, I've, I've heard this a couple of times too, just listening in, but I don't have any questions right now.
Right. Any other thoughts? Any thoughts from the university? Didn't mean to put you on the spot though, but you look like you were lonely.
Thanks. That was an interesting presentation and thanks for mentioning UTS and how it can feed into, into that transit. So I think that's, that's a good thing. So thank you.
Ms. Dow.
Yes. So I'm, thank you for the presentation. I too like, where we wanted, initially wanted to know how it differed, how the presentation tonight differed than the services that are already offered by Jaunt. And then I also would like to know if you have this information available. I know right now you're kind of partnering with people who work with Omni Transportation through Medicaid services or typically those who are ADA, to have an ADA necessity to use you. Do you have in mind any other partnerships right now that would be able to plug into this use?
Absolutely. We went after a federal grant with Loaves and Fishes to seek that very specific food security concept, to seek funding to help us demonstrate what, for the feds, they're kind of figuring out, they're trying to figure out how to measure the performance of this type of concept. For us, we went after the grant to help get that type of initiative up and going. So we've been having a lot of conversations, not just with Loaves and Fishes, but some other food banks as well, of how this kind of platform can help expand the, the reach and offering of their services.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts?
So well, once you're able to request a ride by an app or phone call, what do you expect that like the turnaround time will be to get that ride? And will there be kind of immediate feedback of, you know, how soon it will get there, like Uber will give you? Yeah, we'll go with that.
Yeah, it's a, one of the mistakes I made probably about a year ago, if not before, is kept, I would say this is Uber-like, and that got interpreted as we were partnering with Uber. We are not partnering with Uber except to maybe include them in some sort of complete trip concept. We are looking to do it ourselves, but under the thought of Uber-like is that we would offer the same type of user kind of interface or engagement that they do with like what type of platform, real-time information, even predictive congestion information. And even to the point that there are platforms out there that we have been talking to that have gone beyond just the concept of transit and looked at the actual human side of this. There's one vendor out there that actually has what they call a dignity rating built into their platform. So when the trip is done, they're able to actually provide feedback on how the trip met those expectations of providing them that mobility, not just connecting them to A to B, but actually how well did it do meeting more of that human side of the equation. To me, that's fascinating to know how well one of my drivers or some other driver treated a passenger in the, in the process of providing the service. So that's, it's, it's very similar to those types of platforms. And the, the difference is going to be more behind the scenes in how some of these opportunities can be layered on top of each other. And the users don't quite know until they go to access a certain destination that that type of service is presented. So for example, Loaves and Fishes, somebody using this to go to work may have to pay out of pocket. Somebody using the platform to go to Loaves and Fishes may have it paid for by Loaves and Fishes. That, that's not a typical Uber or any other ride-sharing type platform approach, but that's the power behind this type of platform that we're able to build those partnerships. And then when people go to use it, they then come across the opportunities for how to access the service or destination that they're looking for. And so you take that, that complication of the mobility or the transportation out of the equation, it improves that opportunity to access the, the service.
Cool. And then my last question is in terms of a resource allocation on your end. In times where, you know, maybe a lot of people are requesting a ride for the very near future, you know, how do you deal with that situation? I'm assuming that kind of the core Jaunt services of like ADA eligible and partnerships come first? And then, you know, you'll just give you a longer time horizon or?
Yes. Two ways to answer that question. One is we're going to have a few resources, vehicles that are going to be dedicated for this purpose. That's just to help manage the expectations that would come from the requests. The other is, we actually expect that some of the ADA passengers will abandon using Jaunt for paratransit ADA services and gravitate to using this platform because they don't have to call a day ahead of time. We have a lot of people who call up to two weeks ahead to schedule a trip to go to the grocery store, but then that morning of, they may cancel it because they weren't feeling well. That's fine. We accept that. We build it into our scheduling models. But I'd rather go back to that word empower. I'd rather empower that individual to have that choice and not be bound by this paratransit ADA structure and be able to have the same opportunity anybody else would to call up at that time that they want to go to the grocery store and make that request. We'll be able to see that those clients are typical ADA clients. We, we necessarily can't give preferential treatment, but we can see how it may relax the need for the resources on the ADA side so we're able to shift them to meet more of that on-demand need. So it'll be an effort on my staff's side to continuously monitor how this evolves over the short period of time to make sure we're not overextending ourselves with not enough resources, but also helping maybe change the way some of the public is utilizing transit. But we, we do know that the resources we have can meet the needs that would emerge from this just from the sheer nature of how we schedule and maximize our, our resources on any given day.
Great. Very good. Thank you very much. That was very helpful, very interesting.
And more than happy to talk one-on-one. If anybody has further interest, I talk transit all night long, but I won't do that and I'll leave you at that. So thank you again for letting me present.
Thanks. And on to Family Day Home. Ms. Chrissy, are you leading that one?
Yes, I am. I'll, I'll give a basic overview and then we have, may have Reed Broadhead, who's our zoning administrator, provide some more detail on some of the aspects of the code itself. Just to bring everyone up to speed, the commission at your July meeting provided a request for a zoning tax amendment related to family day homes. And so we have taken this in a couple of different directions. One is that there is the opportunity to provide information from a legislative standpoint. And so Ms. Robertson provided some information to the Legislative Committee for the city and then provided some information that went on to our delegates for the state because some of the potential changes that might need to occur would be things that would have to have state support. There aren't things that we'd be able to do now. So Ms. Robertson put together some informational background and submitted that to you all back in July, but she also, we also included those materials here. And she may have some feedback on this as we go through the discussion. I'm not sure that we've, we've heard, heard anything from that, but we have at least provided the information for that opportunity. So the, in the other direction, locally, our current ordinance that's on the books needs updating. It is a bit antiquated and many changes had occurred from the state level. And so we took the opportunity to update, provide recommendations for updates to the code that would adhere to those state regulations. And so just as a side note, that if someone were to need to come forward, they would, we would work with them through the current state regulations. So what is allowable by the state would be what we would be enforcing from a city standpoint. What this would do is provide the opportunity for an update to our code language and that would provide additional clarity to the community from that perspective. So what we have brought forward is a clarification to the occupancy residential definition within the code. We've also put forth some proposals for how to update the use matrices in order to reflect this. So as we were talking about a bit last, in July, when we were working on this, that one to four children is considered to be single family. And so that is something that we put, we want to move forward and clear up in the matrix that any area that allows single-family residential would allow for that use. And then five to 12 children requires a state license and noting categories for that that would allow for it to be, continue to be by right in the areas that it currently. continue to be by right in the areas that it currently is, which are the B districts, the business districts, and then allow for it by provisional use in the all other districts that allow for residential use. And then our zoning staff spent a good amount of time working through potential provisions for a provisional use permit. And so a provisional use permit, an applicant would apply for this. And then if they can adhere to each of the regulations that are put forth in the permit, which they will have in advance, then we would be able to move forward with that. I would say that probably the most significant item with that is the state licensure requirements. And so on our end, it would be a very straightforward process for the applicant to move forward through because they, once they get through the state process, that's a lot more rigorous. And, you know, we we found that, you know, ours is just checking a box basically at that point in time. So I'm gonna hand it over to Reed in a second to address anything I may have missed. But we're hoping this evening that you all will be able to provide us some guidance on whether this is the direction that you all would like this to go. And we have a few questions for feedback as well. And those are page three. And are there variations needed to areas where family day home for five to 12 children is allowable by right or by provisional use is one of the questions we proposed. And is there any update to the provisional use permit regulations as we have proposed them? So depending on the, we'll see how the outcome of this discussion goes. And if it's moving in a positive direction, then we will work towards a public hearing, scheduling it for a hearing. If we need to work on it some more based on the discussion, then we'll take that opportunity to do so. Reed, did you have a few items that I may have missed?
Sure. Yeah, I just wanted to touch on the what I put together. And my understanding is that the planning commission wanted to find a way to kind of ease what we had, the restrictions that we had in place. And so I was looking at some of the provisional use permits that we already have in place, such as the home occupation form and the the homestay and try to mirror this closely closely to that. So I also looked at sort of the special use permits that were granted in the past for family day homes in excess of five children. And that's why we, for instance, required that or are proposing require that a traffic safety plan be required. That's something that the planning commission has asked for in the past. Also, that's where we came up with the the hours of operation, 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. That would be consistent to one of the approvals in the past. We're proposing that this be an annual permit that kind of gives us the ability to reset and and make sure that this family day home isn't causing issues for the neighborhood. That's consistent, for instance, with the homestay permit. It kind of gives us a chance to reevaluate it. Also, the signage clause, the revocation clause are similar to what we have in the the homestay ordinance. It's important for us to have that a strong revocation clause to make sure that we weed out any problems that that might exist. And and it's pretty harsh too that, you know, if you if you lose your permit, then you can't apply for the subsequent year. So it basically is pretty strict, but important for preserving neighborhoods and preventing problems from occurring. The the one problem that I ran into is number eight is this 30-day window where I would be required to notify all adjacent property owners of the proposed use. The the reason I say it's a problem is it's this slows expediting this process. I know that we wanted to create a this permit to not, you know, require them to go to the planning commission, allow people to to really get through the process really quickly. And this is number eight is in reaction to a state code that states that I should notify all adjacent property owners. So it's a win, I would say, for the adjacent property owners. So they know that this is actually coming and it's an opportunity for them to voice their concerns. But it does slow the process. You know, that I think that was the intent of 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 looking at this ordinance is to really kind of speed up the process. So it's a little, it's going to be faster than going and getting a special use permit, which takes some time, but it's still going to take 30 days after they receive their licensure and can submit all the information. So it's going to kind of slow down the process as well.
Reed, is the 30 days a state requirement?
It is a state requirement that that was discovered through doing some research by both myself and Lisa Robertson.
So is there any way for that 30 days to run concurrently with getting sort of the application materials in order? So that you could send the letter at the very beginning of the process, it starts running, and meanwhile, you're getting everything else done?
Yeah, I I don't see why that would be an issue. You know, noting, so if this person came and got an application, said, this is what I want to do. And I explained to them all the things that they need to get done, including getting the state licensure. And they show me, you know, they pay for the the application fee. And then I can send out a notice to all the adjacent property owners. But, you know, for instance, if their state licensure isn't approved, then maybe I would have to notify the neighbors and say, sorry, this is actually not happening. But yeah, that that would be a really good idea to have it run concurrently so that, you know, if the state process takes 30 days, then they're all done after one month and we can really get it going.
I have a question about the traffic safety plan. Does that have to be done by a certified engineer? Or can the applicant themselves propose a traffic safety plan?
I do not know what document was actually submitted with that S U P, but I have a feeling that the homeowner essentially submitted a sketch showing how they proposed drop-off to happen, how they propose pickup to happen and make sure that the kids can get safely to the residence where they're where they're going. I don't, I wouldn't want them to have to get a a traffic engineer and and go to that expense to to provide me some some safety measures. I certainly would on my side have our traffic engineer review the plan and propose, you know, comments or or ways that they might improve it.
And I recall that's what happened with at least one of our S U P requests is that the applicant put a proposal together and then we ran it by whoever our traffic engineer was at that point in time for feedback. So, yeah, it's, you know, basically trying to make sure that drop-off and pickup are as safe as possible.
That did happen on the S P that was done or S U P that was done over near Fontaine.
It was the Purple Crayon.
That's right. That's right. And so that was reviewed by, sorry, I had some technical difficulties. I just totally, my computer died. But so that that was done. It was a one-way thing. So.
Yeah, I really, I mean, the places that are going to be a problem are places maybe where there isn't a driveway or there's no sidewalk or it's a very busy intersection, you know, if it's happening. Yeah, in the middle of Fry Springs somewhere, you know, there's going to be less concerns, but we certainly need to look at that and look at the impact on traffic patterns and what have you. So, I mean, it's certainly important to have that, especially if issues arise, so that we can go back and look at this document and make sure they're in compliance.
Is it possible to share out that old one as an example, just so people who are not traffic engineers can go, oh, yeah, I can, I can drive that down?
Yeah, yeah, I wasn't involved in that special use permit. So I just read the conditions, but didn't actually look at the plan. But that certainly would be helpful to provide that information to a potential applicant.
And since we mentioned drop-offs, is there some mechanism so that, you know, if needed for traffic safety, that a an on-tree parking space could be reserved during hours of operations for drop-off and pickup, that sort of thing? You know, I'm thinking about how we have the valet parking ordinance where you can reserve a spot for valet. And I guess the traffic engineer can just decide to make something a loading zone. Is that how we would do it? Or do we need some sort of special?
For this. That would probably have to be something special. As far as I know, currently, if you want to reserve a parking space in front of your property, like for instance, in residential areas, if someone gets a pod, like a moving storage container, they have to pay $20 per day to have a space reserved for themselves. And certainly that's cost prohibitive for a family day home to have to pay $100 a week to have a drop-off space. So I think we'd have to come up with something else, some other mechanism to to reserve a space. But that that would probably, you know, really only come into the really dense areas of the city. And it, we could, we can brainstorm and and I certainly can reach out to Brennan and 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 speak to that major, but he might want to weigh in.
Yeah, I'm here. I said, I'm here. I I think what we would probably do in that instance, you know, we, there is a petition to to change any public parking to something else. So, you know, it could be a loading zone between certain hours or something like that. And that just needs a 14-day comment period of the public to kind of weigh in on that. So as long as there were like massive opposition to all of the neighbors on the street or anything like that, that could be something that could be done. But but that that would be the route that I would probably start with.
Well, again, where where there was a problem with this one S U P, this was a road that barely had a shoulder. I mean, didn't have curb and gutter or things like that, if I remember correctly. Missy, and sidewalk was at a maybe non-existent as well.
No sidewalk.
Yeah. And so that was where that problem was. But Brennan, there is a place over on East Jefferson. They have a drop-off during certain time, you know, morning and afternoon for for school drop-off. And I guess it's, I'm not sure what school it is, but it's on East Jefferson, near the course.
I think it's Charlottesville Day School, maybe. That's on like.
So it is something that can be done, maybe.
Yes. Yep.
Can't hear you, Tania.
Sorry. Thought I was unmuted. I just have one quick question. I noticed that you said the hours were from seven to six for operation. And I was just wondering, is there, is that the only limit to being able to function as a day home? Or if they wanted to operate after 6:00 PM, would that be under a different definition? Or is that allowable?
This, this is just a proposed hours of operation. So if if you feel that it should probably be extended in any way, then that would be up to the planning commission to make that proposal.
And that typically is one of the main items in the special use permit discussions that occurs is hours of operation and and considerations pertaining to that. So, you know, we took the, we took the one, you know, looked at what we had on in-house and and provided a range there, but that that was one where we thought there may be some discussion because it's a tough one.
Yeah, because in my mind, I'm just thinking if you're a healthcare worker or, you know, even if you work in other industries, especially that are very prominent right now, where you cannot work from home during COVID, those shifts are not only seven to three, you have three to 11 and also overnight. So just wondering if someone would be able to capitalize on that underserved market as well with this provisional use permit?
Yeah, I'm I'm just looking right now to see if I can see if if there's hours of operation on the home occupation permit. And if I come up with that, I will let you know. But this is just kind of thinking about business hours. And I've got several colleagues that drop their kids off at daycare and that kind of 6:00 PM tends to be like the limit. Even 5:30, like if you're not there by 5:30, you're paying by the minute to to pick up your child. So, but certainly if you feel that it should, it could be changed, it certainly is up to the planning commission to decide if they want to amend it or or put comments in there.
I just wanted to see if it was an option to leave it open. So just in case, you know, if someone wanted to serve the market of the seven to 11 work group that they could, I didn't know if they fell under this day home provision or definition or if it was under a different term or definition. Thank you.
Just a possibility. Could it be possible for, because I think some sites, this could work just fine outside those hours. Could there be some component where staff could use some element of discretion? Just looking at a site saying, oh, yeah, that'll be fine there.
Well, we would just, we would look at the the discretion would be the regulations in the in the provisional use permit. So they would have, whatever the provisions are in that permit are what we would be able to enforce. So it has to have some parameters. Now, you know, there are different ways that folks could could work through through that. If it's a situation where it's a, you know, five, five to 12 during daytime hours, but they have individuals that they care for in the one to four range, then that goes into the by right category in most situations. And so we would, you know, so what we're thinking about here is the situations where someone may have five to 12 children outside of the normal working hour range and how to think about how they may function.
I I just looked, the home occupation is, it talks about customers coming to premises between 8:00 AM and 9:00 PM. And certainly this is a different animal because, like you said, and as I know, people need to get their kids dropped off early so they can get to work. And so, but this is just, like I said, a proposal. And I I think it's important to keep some sort of hours there. But if you want to open it up a little more, then then that certainly is is, and and if there are other commissioners agree, then then that's what what we'll do.
Think that would eliminate some of the neighborhood concerns when this goes out to those folks for that 30-day. Because then if you get started getting a lot of neighborhood concerns based off of this application, that's going to slow things down as well. Things that we've seen come out lately have been like 7:30 to 5:30. So this does open up seven to six.
I just, I don't think necessarily that we need to change the hours. I would just like for there to be a clause or some type of amendment where if someone needs to amend those hours to suit their clients, that they could.
I think the only way that we would be able to do that for the five to 12 range of children would be to have some sort of additional zoning function. You know, if if a a care facility that was going to, and this is a family day home, so it's it's different than a daycare center. So, you know, family day home, five to 12 children within X time range, wherever we land with that. After those hours, if they were to convert to a one to four children. After those hours, if they were to convert to a one to four children range, then we would, we wouldn't have any regulation over the timeframe for that smaller, smaller grouping. So it's, it sounds like from this discussion, really the trying to see if there's any way to accommodate a family day home that would allow for five to twelve children after standard working hour range is, is what we would, would be trying to figure out if we need to do that. You know, if there's a demand and I'm, I'm, you know, just off the top of my head, I'm thinking it would have to be an allowance through special permit to do something like that. So, yeah, that's, that's, I thought, it's a very, it's a very good point, though.
Yeah, that, that, I hate to create a new special use permit process, but.
Well, it's already a special use permit.
Right. So we're, we're at least narrowing. But broadly, I, I think what you're making sense is, is good work. I think this will create more opportunities if we can get something finalized and approved soon. That's, that's my main concern.
Amazing by staff to get something together fast. So thank you all for, for the hard work to get this together.
Yeah, I would note that Reed and Craig did the heavy lifting on this. They, they spend a lot of time in this world and they really vetted the provisional use permit section. The, the, you know, by right provisional use area, that, that was a little more simplified. But yeah, really trying to figure out the sections for the provisional use for discussion. That, that was a heavy lifting.
So does anyone want a five minute break? We go to stripling. We do. All right. Please, please, five minutes, guys, please. All right, five minutes. All right, Matt, take over.
Thank you, Chair. So I am Matt Alfley. I am the city planner assigned to this project. So tonight you are holding a work session on two forty stripling. And this prize, this project has been kind of in the workshop, seen at a different stages. You held a work session last time back in February. I know that feels a lot longer ago than February in the N D S conference room. And that's where you saw the initial design from Southern Development, who is the contract purchaser for two forty stripling, which is currently owned by Car Gray's Properties LLC. At that meeting, the commission had a positive reaction to the design, the mix of housing types, Central Greens, street layouts. Kind of a positive reaction to the density, which stayed in the existing density of fifteen D U A. But it was different housing types. The planning commission was looking to see a greater affordability, especially below the eighty percent A M I. More protection for Morse Creek. And the, the main focus and what you heard tonight too, from the community is the effect on Stripling Avenue and on Morgan Court. So the applicant took that information from the work session that was on February twenty sixth. And they did some updates to it and they submitted an actual application in August. As part of their application, they also held a community meeting on September third. This was held through Zoom and this was done as outlined in the new community meeting procedure. So this meeting there, it was, it was attended pretty well. There was forty, about forty or so participants. The meeting was taped and it's available to what, anyone to watch. And the meeting is technically open for forty five days. So when they held the meeting, it went out, the, the notice, the invitation, and then self addressed envelopes, return addresses and portions of the plan were mailed out. And the meeting's open for forty five days from September third for people to send back comments that could not attend the meeting in person, I use in person by on Zoom. So that meeting technically is still open till the end of that forty five day window. The plan before each night has changed very slightly from what you saw your work session in February. The applicant will be given a presentation, can kind of go into that a little bit more. But some of the changes you're seeing is the original looked like it had about a hundred and seventy units. They're now maybe a hundred and eighty one units. The design has pretty much stayed the same, but they have proffered a contribution for offsite improvements to stripling. And they proffered fifteen percent of the units as designated for affordable with the A, A M I between twenty five and sixty percent. After the applicant gives his presentation, you know, we can open it up to discussion. The city engineer and the city traffic engineer are also in this meeting and can speak to some of the higher level stuff. I can tell you that they have not reviewed the plan in detail you would in a site plan. Now they, you know, we can talk about some of the conceptual things and some of the, the positives and negatives, but there's, there's not been the, the, the level of review you would get at a site plan review. With that, I'm going to turn it over to the applicant to give his short presentation. And then staff's here to answer questions as, and the applicants here to answer questions as the commission gives feedback before the applicant takes his next, next step.
Hi, everybody. Make sure you can hear me. I've just been promoted to panel, so had to jump on. Thank you very much for conducting an additional work session with us this evening. Really appreciate the feedback. I'm Charlie Armstrong. Also on our team here, who I don't think have yet been promoted, but could if we have questions that come up for them, are Kevin Riddle with Mitchell Matthews and Clint Shiflett of Timmons Group. And that's the leaders of our design team. Want to start, Lisa, I want to just say thanks for, for a decade, or is it a decade of service on the planning commission? You, you've been a big critic at times of some of the work we've done, but we've done some great projects in the city. While you've been on the planning commission and I've.
I won't let you down tonight.
I've got a lot of respect for what you brought and, and even more for the number of hours you've given to the city. So thanks, I mean it. I'll miss seeing you here. Y'all have seen this before, as Matt mentioned, so we're here with some more detail for this work session. What we had before was really kind of a skeleton outline of an idea, and this is a full application. We've been in the listening mode for about a year now on this project. This is our third work, work session with planning commission, and we've had three meetings with Fry Spring Neighborhood and Water Community. In short, I want to address what I heard and some of the earlier comments from neighbors. We absolutely agree that stripling needs bike, pet improvements, and it has for a long time. And as part of that, as part of this proposal, we want to help with that. I'm not sure we can do everything that everybody wants, but we want to help to the greatest extent we can. So Joey, do you want to start the presentation slides, please? Thank you. So this first slide is really, just to give an idea of what we're going for here, the way that this place will feel. The architecture that we're showing here is just a concept. It's not exactly what something would look like. We certainly have not designed all the buildings at this early stage of, of a project in the zoning stage. But it gives you an idea of the pedestrian feeling place that we're going for. This is a view of the central linear green that runs from the upper middle of the site all the way down to Morse Creek at the bottom. The next slide, please. And this slide is zooming way out to give you the larger context. We showed you a general massing illustration last work session with some kind of yellow and blue building masses shown on it. And it was in the same design as this generally. That's outdated now because this is a more refined design. But, and it was included in your packet for that reference, so you can see kind of where we came from and where we're going. So this shows its context related to what's nearby. Huntley is on the bottom right. Eagles Landing Apartments on the other side of Morse Creek is at the bottom left. And the U V A Fontaine, Fontaine Research Park is there at the top. It also shows context in relation to other green spaces, many of which are preserved, open space in the Huntley P U D or open spaces that will be permanently preserved with this P U D. And next slide, if you don't mind, Joey. So this is the overall lot and building layout. I won't spend a lot of time on it since it's in your packet. But Strilling Avenue is to your, is to the left, and that's the primary entrance onto the site. Morgan Court in Huntley is at the top. This is a secondary entrance, which I'd like to discuss a lot more with you as we go. Morse Creek is to the right and Almont County Line and the Knob Hill subdivision is at the bottom of the image here. And the next slide. And the next slide are just a little bit more detail with conceptual landscape screening and street trees shown. We will be engaging a professional landscape architect at some point in the process to design the final landscape plan before a final site plan would be submitted. But this shows you just the concept of what we're going for, and you can go to the next one, Joey, and then pause a few seconds and go on to the next one. The large green area shown here is proposed to be permanent tree preservation along the creek and along the western edge of the property. And the teal colored areas are proposed stormwater management facilities. Being this close to Morse Creek, that's very important. As you've already heard from neighbors and as we feel as well. And we can go to the next slide, please. These next two are really hard to read, I'm sure, unless you have giant screens. But they are the proposed use matrices showing what uses would be allowed in this proposed P U D and what are currently allowed in the R one and R two zones. That's the current zoning of the property. Just for comparison. And next slide. And these are our proffers, also probably hard to see, but also in your packet. Like discuss these with you as we go through the meeting tonight too. But in short, they are five hundred thousand dollars toward bike, pet improvements on Strilling Avenue. I want to note while we're talking about that the bike, pad, master sidewalk improvement list in the bike, pad, master plan shows the assumed cost of sidewalk on Stribling at five hundred and ninety eight thousand dollars for the, the sidewalk. That's worth looking into more detail. I think we, city has not done extensive study on that yet. And we already know that that does not include drainage improvements, which the street also needs all the way down to J P A, especially if curb is added. But that is the cost that's been estimated for sidewalks alone. Five hundred and ninety eight is the city estimate. And the other proffer there is affordable housing. We're proffering fifteen percent of the units dedicated as affordable For households earning less than sixty percent AMI. We're trying really hard to hit a lower affordability threshold than is kind of city standard and. In city ordinances and and has been traditionally met with some projects of eighty percent. And so we are proffering everything at below sixty percent here. And that is the presentation. I'm looking forward to a robust discussion. Staff in the intro. To the staff report proposed. Five discussion points, all of which I really appreciate, I think are great. I would ask to add a sixth to discuss. And that is some feedback on the use matrix that we are proposing. Whether the uses that we're proposing to allow and disallow. Give any concern to commissioners. Are they too restrictive or are they not restrictive enough? So. That's the presentation. I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair.
Right. So questions, comments, input?
I have a question. So in some of the public comment. It was mentioned that the community. Are the neighborhood. Organization was in support or voice their support of the project and yet we I heard from a lot of residents that said that. That was not the case. Do you know anything about how that? Miscommunication happened?
I only know what I've heard at the neighborhood meeting we recently had. And that was that support that the Neighborhood Association voted on is conditioned on a number of things. So maybe that's the where the details are. I haven't seen the letter as it's not ready yet, but I'm sure that. That's what it is. I also know that not everybody in the neighborhood goes to the Neighborhood Association meetings, so. You know, it's like a miniature government there. The views of the association as an entity can never reflect the views of every individual.
Okay, thank you.
Just a quick for clarification. We met on this the first time at the TJPDC building on Water Street. With a work session, if y'all remember November. Maybe.
Yeah, it was.
Was it November?
August, I think.
August? Was it? I don't know. So have you been in talks back in that time? Let's talk the August, November doesn't matter. It was last year. It wasn't twenty twenty. And there was some robust discussion about, yes, improvements need to be need to happen there. Have you been in discussion with the city at all based off of? Conversation we had there regarding the right, not only just bike and pad, but the road improvements that need to happen. In that area.
We have. We've had a number of different conversations. And walked the entire length of scribbling socially distance, of course. With the city engineer, city traffic engineer and city bike pad coordinator as well. And we have. Looked at a number of issues. Drainage is the hardest to solve. Right of way seems to be there in most places to be able to add a sidewalk. Not necessarily for any grading that would need to be done to to get grade to match that sidewalk when when the sidewalk joins the playing property. So if it's. A little bit steeper on one side or the other. Additional grading might be a problem and might be outside of the right of way. And there there are. There's very little information on any existing drainage easements that may or may not exist and we're pretty certain. City engineer is pretty certain that there, even if there are easements, that they aren't sufficient. For adding things like storm sewer pipes to get water from the road to where it would eventually need to go or adding. Any water quantity or quality treatment that might want to be integrated into it. But replacement of sidewalk alone, we think the right of way may be there. And is likely there.
So when we met back in August, November, and I think Lisa and I were actually agreed with it. We're agreed on this. You had a concept that was. Not a PUD. And I think we thought that what you were attempting to do would work well if in fact you 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 morphed this into a PUD. And we did encourage you to give some thought to putting together a proposal that that that. That embraced the idea of a PUD, but I think Lisa and I both also pointed out. That we would have to significantly improve the road and drainage infrastructure to make that happen. So I want to get that out there for the people that asked about, you know, our interest in morphing this into a PUD. I wanted to make sure people knew once too that we also suggested that. Much better infrastructure would be needed to support that. Lisa, do you remember that?
I do remember that and I think the discussion at that time was also. This was right on the heels of of some of the comprehensive plan where when Rory was twenty twenty five. But. That comprehensive plan that we were originally doing at that point and and I'm not sure, you know, this will need to be something that the public will want to. Especially the the Fresh Springs neighborhood, you're going to want to weigh in on this. So if you're not weighing in on the comprehensive plan, then you may be missing the boat, but. At that point, this area, we we had looked at to increase the density. Again, you can increase density without increasing the infrastructure for sure. And so that is when we had a conversation that, you know, that that you all and the and the and the cities, they're gonna you're gonna have to get together and increase. This, the infrastructure in this area for. Water. You know, drainage, transportation. And I say transportation, meaning not only vehicle traffic, but but bike pad. But that was that was that discussion back in August of last year. And so, yeah, we did talk about a PUD at that point, but. You know. You'll want to pay attention to that comprehensive plan. The original where we were going with the comprehensive plan and Jody, you may want to pop in on this is is a is a very dense area in that. In in right in that neighborhood, not just the neighborhood, but in that area, right on that on that Alamo County border. Based off of a lot of different things, the the health system that's there and people being able to to work there and and walk to work.
Yeah, and I want to point out too that the PUD was something that appealed to me and I think to others. In that this is a really special site and it had and it has a real. Some challenging topography. And a lot of assets to it from Morse Creek to the to the woods to. So it it seemed appropriate to us to look at a PUD in that that would allow then the clustering of buildings together. And thus then preserve some of the special features of the site. And and that's what we haven't seen in PUDs that come before us in the past, but. This was, this looked like a good opportunity for what the PUD would allow.
And if I could comment on Ms. Green's comment about the site about the comprehensive plan. As I recall from August, I guess a year ago. It was already past the time where we had pushed finishing the new draft, the comp plan off. And as I recall, we were specifically talking about the current adopted comprehensive plan, the twenty thirteen comprehensive plan. Which calls for low density in this area and defines low density as up to fifteen units per acre. And so this plan does fall within that amount. And I I think it does make sense, given what Mr. LaHendro just said. To put additional density beyond the by right amount in this area. And and keep that open space and the the mature forest around the perimeter. And yeah, I just want to really stress that this is in compliance with the twenty thirteen comprehensive plan. And at the same time is contributing towards our larger goals as a city. To to build more densely and to stop pushing out into sprawl where, you know, we might. Of these twelve acres of forest be losing eight or nine within the city here, but they don't do. City residents that much good for enjoyment of nature as private, you know, no trespassing. Like wooded areas where you're not allowed to go and are not adjacent to things like streets and sidewalks. So when the alternative to building townhomes here is building townhomes in Croze and clear cutting some old growth forest and then having all the residents. Drive in for twenty five minutes, the choice for the environment, I think, is fairly clear.
I'll kind of recall back to that meeting and Ms. Dow, you may want to help me out, remember. We we discussed a much more robust affordable housing plan. If I'm not mistaken, that 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 our our wishes and desires would would be there. If if that's if that's not something that I'm recalling right, but I thought we had discussed that this is the perfect opportunity for for in this area. For. That to occur.
And we did. And one thing I see that they did take into account is they did. Increase the options of the AMI affordability. I also would like to point out and agree with one of the one of our residents that spoke during the public comment that fifteen percent. Is still a little bit small for me. Fifteen percent out of a hundred and eighty one units is roughly about twenty seven, maybe twenty eight, because you can't do a point fifteen of a unit. And when you do numbers, twenty eight out of a hundred and eighty one seems like a very small drop in the bucket. I also, while I have the floor and concerned about still some connectivity issues that go along with this. Plan as we looked earlier. To get to the closest cat bus stop. You might as well call it a cab. This is this would be a great instance where that new job plan would probably be great and effective. So definitely, I still think we need to. Chalk that out a little bit as well.
And building upon that, Mr. Armstrong. Where in the development were you all planning to have the affordable housing occur? Has that been decided?
We have not decided. What we have done in the proffer is say that at least thirty percent. Of it shall be for rent units and at least thirty percent. Of it, make sure I get this right. Shall be for sale with a guaranteed affordability on those for thirty years. So we have proposed some multifamily units. In here as well as townhomes, which are technically single family attached. And so because of the way that proper structure is would. Almost require that. The units be spread in those two types of buildings that are on the site. We don't like to cluster the affordable units. We've got a track record of the stuff we've done so far of having them really integrated. And in a lot of cases, really central to the communities that we've built. You all hear me trot out Burnett Commons all the time, but I'll keep doing it because I really, I really believe in what what was done there. The affordable units are. Are kind of the centerpiece of phase three. Right in the middle. So we would probably aim for something similar here, but we haven't. We haven't identified specific lots or buildings or anything like that.
And why I ask because I I've read some public comment about the fact that. They believe that it was targeted for the last of the phasing. And that there was a good chance that it wouldn't, it would never happen.
Now, we have a proffer to be is that. The ADUs shall be provided incrementally such that at least five affordable units would be under construction prior to the issuance every thirtieth. Certificate of occupancy for market rate units. So it it stipulates that that can't happen. It has to come along simultaneously.
Great. Thank you for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
Would you, I'm just going to be predictable in ask questions about Morse Creek. Would you, I think, I think. The PUD idea will will help you protect the creek a bit because it allows you a little more creativity, but. Talk a little bit about, I know we're ways away, but talk a little bit about your thinking relates to Morse Creek and what you what you hope to do to protect the creek.
Sure, glad to hear. Joey, would you be able to go back to slide six, maybe?
Yeah, one, one second.
I'll start talking.
Your 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 thinking is you're not going to do any development of slopes or are you gonna are you gonna develop the slopes?
We are requesting a critical slope waiver for some of the fringes there of the slopes because they are. They kind of creep into the middle of the site and a lot of places that make them really hard to avoid, except in kind of a cul-de-sac arrangement of. Of accessways. I don't know if y'all can remember back to pre-COVID days when we showed you that. Either by rider R two. Development plan had two cul-de-sacs kind of coming off of each other. And they rode the ridges and stayed completely out of the critical slopes. The only way to do something that's more creative like this, we would have some slow disturbance, but. What you're looking at here, the green areas are proposed for permanent tree preservation. There there are essentially two drainage ways on this site. One is Morse Creek. That's the obvious, very large. Drainage way. And the other one is along the Alamo County line. That one is a. A smaller drainage, but still very important and has some of the the biggest. Mature trees on the site and in that area upboarding Alamo County. Those would be permanently preserved in open space, which provides a buffer against Morse Creek. There to the right of this image. We've got a couple hundred feet from Morse Creek to the nearest building. And it completely stays out of the stream buffer that's on Morse Creek in the, I guess that's a zoning designation. And any wetlands and flood plain that are also down there. So that that protects that. Unfortunately, there's a sewer. A main sewer line that runs along Morse Creek there. So occasionally they the they come and cut it like they mow it, I guess.
And where is that?
Even though it's along the creek, we've we've got another agency that that does keep that somewhat clear. So. What we're proposing to do there is is put in a multi-use trail. Which is part of the Trails Master Plan for the city shown there. And it's actually a well-traveled path already, even though it's not an official trail. So that would be a permanent trail. Eventually, it would hopefully come directly to scribbling. In the meantime, we would connect it to our internal road system via a paved path. So that it's accessible to bikes, pedestrians and strollers on a hard surface all the way from scribbling down to that Morse Creek trail.
Will you engage the engineers regarding the regarding the steep slope?
They are engaged. They've already.
What feedback are you getting?
I don't know that we've gotten any engineering feedback from the city. Yeah, we have submitted a. Critical slope detail there that would come to you with a rezoning simultaneously with a public hearing. I don't recall any specific feedback on that from them at this point.
I want to talk about my heart, if I may. My heart parking. I looked at your parking calculations and I was expecting, you know, fully parked up. I was expecting. I looked at your parking calculations and I was expecting, you know, fully parked up. I was expecting a story of every single truck. On site, not affecting the the neighboring areas. You are double parked. There is so much parking. What is going on?
Yeah, people still like cars, except you, maybe. I'm sure that there are exceptions, but. The the way we've kind of attacked that issue. Is the only surface parking is parallel on-street parking, which I think really looks to the streetscape and the and a pedestrian feel and. And kind of more traditional neighborhood feel as you walk up and down those streets. There are no parking lots or designated parking surface areas. If it's not parallel parking on the street, it is under the buildings. So there is parking proposed under the multifamily buildings and parking proposed under the townhouse buildings as well. Where the people use those for cars or their gym equipment. I don't know, but that's where it is. We found it's pretty hard to sell. Or rent a unit without parking. Though the way these spaces are right now, I would hope that they could be someday converted to some other use. If people stop liking their cars so much.
Do you have a sense about when the trails you have shown there might come online for more public use?
No, I haven't thought about the timing of that just yet. I would think that the sewer, if there are any sewer improvements that need to be made there would have to be done first. And there's no reason to do anything down in those protected areas. So it could potentially be very early on. The only spot that would be tricky, maybe where it connects to our existing roads because there is a building. That would be very close to that trail. So at a minimum, the part along Morse Creek could be very early, but the connection up towards Stribling. And through our new roadways and sidewalks. Might need to wait until the building construction was out of the way just for safety.
So one of the one of the basic questions that we were supposed to ask is about the roads. And will they meet city standards?
We're proposing something a little different. If if you look at that overall plan that's in your packet. The main roads coming in off of Stribling. And then going down past the multifamily areas. Are shown as full city standard streets, sidewalks, both sides, parking on the street. But then the smaller roads that look like alleyways that kind of stub off of those main roads to serve the townhomes. We want to propose something that would be, it was just adopted in the new standards and design manual that everybody. Worked so hard on is an innovative street design concept. Something that's not currently in the city standards, but would be thoroughly vetted by all the traffic and engineering staff. To make sure that it does meet safety, community access, fire, everything that's important for a street. Those are shown. As being 22-foot wide pavement width. With buildings really close on that, a couple feet away from the pavement. So the. It it functions and looks like an alley. And the homes that that back to those. I call them alleys, but technically they would have to be. Streets by city nomenclature. There you go. Thank you. That's a good slide. The homes that back to those alleyways and load by vehicle and for service like trash. On that alleyway would actually front on the green spaces. And maybe if you. Go back to, let me see which slide it would be. Go back one more and see if that gets. Yeah, so these are the fronts of the houses here on these pedestrian greens. This is where we want the building orientations to be. This is where we want people coming and going. This is where we want guests coming and going because the parking for guests, if you're. Having somebody over is parallel on-street. So they wouldn't, no guest would ever really need to use those service streets that are between the buildings. They would come to the front door on the pedestrian green space. So it's a little bit of an engineering guinea pig challenge for us that nobody's. Looked at this part of the standards and design manual before because it's brand new. We want to try it. We want to do something a little bit unique. That would really serve to create the place rather than. Being focused on streets first, place later. This is place first, streets second.
So Matt, what do you, what do we think about the those alleyways?
So that's more how the standards and design manuals is set up. Is it really puts the 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 onus on the developer to convince. Public Works to convince the city engineer and traffic. That the innovative streets, you know, they meet that section. That section really talks a lot about the meeting ADA compliance. So there was a meeting. Public Works and some other staff met with the applicant. And provided this this information. And I believe fire was also in that meeting because the, you know, Public Works Fire, they're going to be really. Important aspects of how the streets work. And so Public Works gave Charlie kind of some direction to look into on what they would want to see before they would ever. Consider taking ownership of these roads for the city. So that's kind of where we're at is. That information was provided to the applicant and that, you know, they're going to need to see a lot more information before they sign off.
And what part of the new standard and design manual is this using? Like, I think it's a good thing that you guys are are using these new rules. That's why we made them. But I see, you know, alleys, we've got yield streets, we've got lanes, we've got shared streets. Which one of those?
Shared, yeah. Shared streets, I believe, was was one. I don't know, and I don't know if Brennan or. Jack can say the exact section numbers. I just don't can't think off the top of my head, but they're very much called out the the sections.
Yeah, there there's there's two sections. There's one, I forget, I don't have the it opened in front of me, but there's one that speaks to. Kind of a generic innovative design. And I think it's somewhere in chapter three or something. Maybe that's it. Yeah, that because there's one, there's one that's for kind of any engineering innovative design. Then there's some specific sections that speak to street innovative designs. I mean, it does give, you know, three or four suggestions. There's alleyways, there's shared street, there's, you know. I I forget how many there are, but there's four or five of them there. And there are specific criteria that has to be met for those. That doesn't mean that those are the only ones that the city would. Look at, but you know, if they wanted to do something different than. Yeah, so 2.8 and 4.7. So yeah, if if they wanted to do something different than this is in 4.7. They they'd have to give us a lot of information. Those, the ones that are in 4.7 have kind of already been vetted. And have certain criteria, you know, met within those. So. You know, that that's kind of where we're at and it's it's up to the applicant to decide. Which one of those he wants to move forward with, or if they want to do something completely different. Then, you know, they've got to do a little bit more legwork on their end.
Okay, great. And regardless of what we decide, all this, every street design is going to have to be cleared by staff and the fire department, right? So.
Yeah, I mean, we we have the the normal city standard that, you know, that's going to kind of get the rubber stamp if it meets that. If it's under those, that 4.7 section, we still have to look at it to make sure that. You know, it's going to work where where they want to put it. So yeah, we'll we'll review it further if it's in that section.
This is Jack Dawson, city engineer, by the way. To to that point, maybe Matt can speak on some of the complications of when we'd have to approve that. Whether would be with the P U D because I would have concerns about them moving forward with that. Right-of-way width without having all the technical detail because the issues are. In section 4.4, alleys are supposed to be private streets. And and don't necessarily. You know, the width, there is not very much engineering information provided in this packet, so we haven't fully reviewed it. But there are concerns about how storm drains, water services, sewer services are all going to fit. In the, in essentially what's a a vehicular way, which is the only asphalt in there as well as. As Brendan said, the 4.1 through 4.7 section discusses alternative roads and the like, and most of those. Rely heavily on ADA compliance. And I think there's some more ADA concerns as well because as soon as you get away from the public right-of-way. The ADA access concerns get a lot more onerous on the on the design.
And so would that be P U D time approval or would that be final site plan?
So. It really needs to be P U D because one of the standards. When you're doing a P U D, you have to meet road standards. So that's not a standard you can adjust. Through a beauty process. City Council doesn't have that authority. So to take advantage of the standard and design section, that's what I mean by they're going to have to get buy-in or. Sign off from Public Works before this was can be moved to a public hearing.
So stepping way back, it sounds like the neighborhood is really in thinking about this is comparing it to Huntley next door. Pretty reasonable, actually, which there's a lot of similarities. P U D, similar stream issues, similar steep slopes issues. I researched that a little bit, it's a little bit before my time. And it looks like the neighborhood was against it. The city had real problems with it. There were some compliance issues and the result had some problems. What are the differences between that and this? Is this just a a copy of that?
No. It it's Huntley was done and we didn't develop it, so I don't know all of the ins and outs, but I'll tell you my understanding and. Some of these are just my recollections from following it over the years. But it was done in the mid 2000 aughts and the P U D ordinance was not very well refined at that point. We did another P U D around the same time, so I I know how the process worked at the time. It it was really a wild, wild west of create your own, whatever you want, as long as city council approved it. And that was just how it was then. It's not a judgment on anything. It was also developed under different stormwater standards. Those changed dramatically in 04 and 09 and again in 14. And so the requirements for water quality and water quantity. Control were really different with Huntley. I know drainage and. And outflow of storm drainage from Huntley was a major issue all during construction and probably even now still. And when you look at Huntley, it it's kind of a suburban design. The lots are small, but it's a. It's a winding road through topography to get from the top to the bottom of a hill. Not it makes sense, but it's not comparable to a. A a design like like this, where we're really focused on not the individual lots, but the place as a whole. So for stormwater, the differences here are that we have to do way, way more. Quantity and quality control just by state and city laws that are now more stringent on that than the developers of Huntley. Were asked to do. And the P U D process as a. Entitlement process has. Really gotten a lot more structure over the years. And I think that's thanks to the city staff and the city attorney's office in particular. Because they were finding a lot of enforceability issues with the previous P U D process from the early 2000s. And wanted to make it a little bit more predictable. You all, I know Lisa, you were there. So now the process is a lot more robust, including things like looking at street. I was referring to the other Lisa, Ms. Robertson, but yes, you were there too, probably. So. Including things like analyzing streets here at this stage of the game to make sure that the streets that we're proposing will actually meet the code. That's not something that happened in the past. You really, in the Huntley days of P U D approval, could have drawn it in pencil. And submitted it for approval. And so I think the differences now you see are pretty. Pretty stark.
And Charlie, also, the the critical slopes ordinance wasn't in place at that point. And EPA standards for TMDLs were not in place. So that's that made that huge. Change in how the stormwater was captured and. How that was handled.
And I wanted to ask about the the placement of of Morgan Court. And especially that cul-de-sac at the end. I mean, it's not designed with lots around the cul-de-sac. It looks like it was designed as if it was envisioned to go through one day to development farther west. Is that how others remember it?
I don't know the. History of that. Maybe maybe there's a way to go back and see what the meeting minutes were from those days. It's probably on Laserfish. But. Yeah, it does go essentially to the edge of the property. It was not designed as a. A suburban cul-de-sac where you'd see lots bringing it all the way around, including a through road. And I can't speak to what they intended at the time, but looking at it today, it sure looks that way that it was intended to go through. While we're on that topic, I would love to hear more feedback from the commission on on that connection. We're hearing loud and clear. From neighbors who live in Huntley, particularly on Morgan Court. That they don't want a connection there of any kind to new development. We had originally envisioned this. I think we talked last time we saw you all as a. Emergency access only, which would include daily traffic, you know, it'd be blocked with bollards or something like that. Since then, city traffic and fire have let us know equally loud and clear. That it would be, if not required by fire code. Strongly encouraged in any review that they did, that be a full vehicle access so that there is a. A second point of access in and out on a daily basis. I agree, the condition of Morgan Court as it is today is is not up to city standards. It's not a city street yet. The developer is still building and working on that. I don't know the exact status of that either. One thing we kind of batted around is is the concept of making some of our internal shared streets, the the narrow streets. One way so that it would be, they would be oriented in a one-way traffic flow that would discourage daily. Use just by the orientation of the the street flow of traffic to or from Morgan Court. I think most people who are coming and going from the site would want to get out to Stribling directly rather than going through Huntley to get there. But we could potentially look at. Adding some one-way directional flow. Again, that's not something we've discussed with traffic engineers with the city. Yet, but that's an option we'd like to look at.
So I'd like to hear a little bit more from the public about this. I think what I've heard loud and clear is that people on Morgan Court don't like the idea of a vehicular connection there, which makes sense. It'd be going through their street. But what do people on Stribling think about the possibility of some traffic going up Morgan instead of along Stribling? I I feel like it's not as top of mind for them as, you know, the rest of the development as a whole, since it's a connection to not their street. But they're the ones who, I guess, be benefiting from it. So I I'd like to hear what people along Stribling think. And also, you know, the traffic engineers' opinions of. How much traffic would actually go along Morgan, given that it's somewhat out of the way. But I I think it's mostly important that it's that a bike-ped connection exists there. But maybe, you know, a compromise between full access and no access is. Either encouraged. either encouraging or only allowing exit-only traffic so that the only traffic would go up the hill of Morgan Court where people are much less likely to speed because they're not going downhill. And there will be more of it in the morning when kids aren't playing in the street. It's a concern we had, whereas inbound traffic is going to be going down the hill and in the afternoon. Also, I'd like to see a curb cut at Morgan and Stribling and a crosswalk there. I don't understand how that wasn't put in a decade after ADA passed.
Can you repeat that, Rory, Morgan and Stribling, do you mean Morgan and Huntley or Huntley and Stribling?
Sorry, yeah, Morgan and Huntley.
So Rory, this is Brennan, I guess to speak to kind of distribution of, of trips. You know, I would only anticipate that probably maybe fifteen or twenty percent would use Morgan Court. Again, unless, I, I think we had somewhere around seventy percent got kind of going north towards the city. And then a thirty percent, you know, heading either south on JPA or heading down Cleveland towards the hospital that way. When I worked with, with EPR and their traffic report. So, you know, the majority of traffic is, is going towards the city, how, how we have it set up in the traffic report. So again, if, if thirty percent of people are, are heading that way, you know, maybe, you know, two thirds of them are using Morgan Court and kind of going around to Sunset Avenue and coming out at Cleveland there. And then a third of people are just staying, again, depending on where, it's going to depend on where you're living in the, the complex as well. I mean, if you're the first house off of Stribling Avenue, you're not going to drive, you know, wind your way all the way through to go out to JPA and turn right. You know, you're just going to go down Stribling. So that's kind of how we had that set up and it seemed reasonable to me, but if you have other thoughts, you know, feel free to share them.
So you're thinking that the, what does go up Morgan would end up on Sunset and not end up on Stribling further down anyway?
Correct. I think the majority of people who would use Morgan are going to end up heading south either, either, you know, further out down JPA or, you know, down Cleveland or something like that. I, I don't see much of the benefit to going down Morgan Court just to end up on Stribling again.
Mr. Chair, are we still in the, the period where we're just asking questions of the applicant?
Yes.
Okay.
I've got a quick question for the applicant. So you're asking for up to a hundred eighty-one units or, which I guess is coming from fifteen DUA. Your site plan shows a hundred and sixty-nine units, which is four, almost exactly fourteen DUA. What is the difference there? Is that just overhead for potential ADUs like we saw at Flint Hill or potentially planning on putting in more units down the line?
It's just a, a difference between what we have drawn on the concept that we think fits and, and setting in the use matrix kind of a, a threshold. So what we did in the use matrix was have one of those lines there say fifteen DUA max. That's how we set that max. We haven't done the, frankly, I hadn't even done the calculations to know that a hundred and eighty-one, that math. But a hundred and sixty-nine is what we're showing here. It is conceivable somebody might want to have an accessory apartment in one of these homes. It's nice to have that as an option without coming back for a rezoning with the city. I think it's kind of silly that, that those even count as a density unit in a lot of cases. But that's a different conversation for a different day. So yeah, that doesn't, that, that does allow that possibility. It wasn't the intent. It was just a, a math situation.
So question for Matt and Missy, I guess. I figure it would be difficult to move forward with a PUD with this level of density unless we know what, what, what needs to be done in these streets and what's our thinking regarding sidewalks, bikeways and drainage? Do we do it? Have, have we thought about that? I mean, or maybe in engineering, yeah.
I mean, those are, those are all elements that are typically part of, of a development plan. You know, really the, the next step would be for them to figure out how they're going to engineer this plan and receive feedback from engineering in order to move forward. You know, they may find that there's some hiccups along the way with that. And it might be a good opportunity once that is worked out to do some additional outreach so that folks understand what's going on. But at this point where, you know, it's hard to answer those questions because they're still in the process of, of putting those plans together.
I mean, it seems that there, there's a lot of work that's going to need to be done and probably more work than five hundred thousand dollars is, is going to do for us. So, I mean, they're going to need help. I, it seems to me that they're going to need help from us to make these streets what they need to be to do this development. Do we have any thinking about that? I mean, is it in, in some place in the capital improvement plan or?
So Missy, I can, I can speak a little bit. So the, we, we do, we have submitted the last couple of years now in the CIP for the sidewalk down Stribling Avenue. One option, if this project were to move forward, would be to take that five hundred thousand and, and try and get, use it as a match to get more funds as well. It, it doesn't necessarily solve the, the issue, you know, the first day that maybe this is open. But it does kind of give us some, some dollars to try and get matching funds from the state and, and move forward that way. But if you're looking for, you know, same day as Huntley gets approved and built, that the improvements are done on Stribling, that that funding is not identified, plans haven't been drawn up. You know, there's been no formal engineering study as to what exactly has to be done for drainage or anything like that, or even the sidewalk. The, the costs that we have in the CIP are, you know, approximate costs right now. So, you know, we're still several years away from, you know, actually doing any improvements on Stribling, even if we had the funding today.
So we wouldn't think about breaking ground on this or allowing them to break ground on this until we knew that we, we had the funding and a plan to, to make the improvements we need to make, or would we?
Yeah, I mean, again, the, the way that Stribling is set up right now, it is substandard from a pavement width standpoint. It's about, it, it, it varies a little bit, but pretty much holds about nineteen feet down the majority of Stribling. Standard's twenty, so it's, it's only slightly substandard, but, you know, it is substandard. As everyone's pointed out, there is no sidewalk. But there, there are portions of sidewalk that don't connect to each other down Stribling right now. So essentially there's no continuous sidewalk. The way that the right of way is set up, where there is available right of way to put sidewalk, it, it sometimes flips from one side of the street to the other based on how the roadway kind of weaves within the narrow right of way that is there. The current right of way, again, it, it varies some, but the majority of Stribling is about a thirty-foot right of way. So it's, I mean, standard city right of way would be forty, forty-five feet now. So, you know, again, even, even the right of way that we have to deal with is very limited. There's usually either, you know, a, a hill or a drop off on one side of the road or the other. So it, it's just not an easy sidewalk to put in. So, you know, there's going to be retaining walls, there's going to be grading of driveways going back onto other people's properties. You know, there's, there's a lot of engineering that has to happen to, to get that done.
That leaves me to a question for Ms. Robertson. Do we, I mean, are we going to have to, is there a takings issue here? Are we going to have to invoke eminent domain to, to build the drainage systems? And we're going to need to build the sidewalks on people's properties that exist?
We'll have to see. Normally, how you manage a, a project like that is you develop your plan and your specifications for that plan. And then you talk to people about it. So if there is a need for additional right of way, that right of way would have to be acquired one way or another. So either people donate it if there's some benefit to them to just dedicate it or the city would value it and offer compensation. And if a person simply did not, for one reason or another, desire to sell it for the compensation offered, something like eminent domain would be a last resort. But, you know, the bottom line is yes, if additional right of way is needed, it would have to be acquired.
This is Jack Dawson, just to, just to remind you again, sort of the, there's, there's a larger concern other than just adding a sidewalk and curb as sort of has been stated. Stribling, there's probably three or four low points or sags along Stribling as you go that length. Each one of those drains to either side. It's not always clear where it drains and, and it goes through somebody's yard. And before you curb that, those don't become huge problems, though there are existing drainage problems there. So as soon as you throw a curb on one of those sides, it's not only whether you can fit that five-foot sidewalk in the right of way with a given road width that varies some down to, you know, eighteen and a half feet, which needs another foot and a half anyway. Then you need to go and chase that water that you've just put into a storm drainage system and put into somebody's yard that only had an acre's drainage. And now you've compounded that, you're, you're chasing your property issues there. So there's a huge unknown and it's not a perfect drainage situation or right of way with issue there. So there's, there's a lot yet to be uncovered in the survey and design phase.
So noting that this is something the neighborhood has been asking for, for a very long time, at least a decade since before I lived in Fry Spring and I moved there when I was twenty-one, since that's how we're measuring time now. So we, we have some cost estimates from the CIP. One point four five million was the unfunded request from last year. First question is, is that the actual estimate or is that assuming revenue sharing? And so the actual estimate would be about three million. Second question, are we confident that we could get revenue sharing from the state? And then third question is, have we ever proactively engaged the neighborhood association or neighbors to ask them to dedicate that right of way in advance in order to reduce that end budget estimate and actually get this thing done sooner instead of just telling the neighborhood to kick rocks for another decade?
Rory, I can tell you that the estimate, I believe from approximately a decade ago was two point two million. But I can tell you that the way that estimates are put together is that's a, a guess, more than estimate. There's been ongoing conversations with the neighborhood, mostly around the neighborhood CIP request. I know I've been out there a few times to, to look at these things. And the, the, if, if we were to, it's probably revenue sharing is with everything. The VDOT and funding is up in the air right now with all projects, everything's essentially on hold. But this is probably not a, because the, it probably doesn't rank very high in the V-Trans score, the way that the VDOT scores safety. It's probably not a winner for revenue sharing or smart scale. But that's, I'm not comfortable making that, that guess. But again, the, the other issue is whether we do it or the developer does it. If it needs to get done before their development, it's, who knows what that timeline is, whether the funding's there, whether we start with the funding and VDOT pulls it from us because they ran out of money, whether it gets re-prioritized for the next two-year period or whether we get bogged down in trying to acquire all this right, right of way amusements to make all this stuff work. So just another note of caution.
So Jody, you were ready to engage with some thoughts?
No, I had a, a question for Brennan or Jack. One, could you comment upon the, the traffic count that was done and the, the public's criticism of when it was done? And also the necessity of a, a traffic light at the intersection of Stribling and JPA?
Yeah, I can talk to both of those. So first of all, I guess all the, the traffic counts that were done, they were kind of scheduled before the COVID stay-at-home order happened. But, you know, once, once it kind of happened and we realized, you know, what was going on, you know, we worked with EPR, the traffic engineer for the applicant to kind of extrapolate, you know, what counts they did have. So we did, we, we had more recent VDOT counts on JPA from, you know, last year around this time. And, and we had them take counts there as well and, and kind of compare those to see as well as, you know, counts that we had up on twenty-nine and other places. So we had a relatively good idea of how much traffic had dropped because of COVID, which, you know, we'd seen fifty percent in other places. The, the numbers that they got on JPA were about sixty percent. And I think they did some estimates based on the Institute for Transportation Engineer estimates based on households and that kind of stuff. So they kind of did a, a count of the area and how many vehicles should be expected on Stribling. And they were about, you know, sixty percent there as well. So we had them or I had them double those, which would put us at a hundred and twenty percent kind of of the estimate. So we, we were confident that the numbers that we were getting were a conservative estimate for what should have been there if it wasn't during COVID times. As far as a signal, it's not going to come close to meeting the criteria for a signalized intersection, even with this development going in there. And we would probably be too close to the intersection at JPA, JPA, Maury for to act very effectively anyway. Yeah.
Thank you, Brennan.
So I, I did take the opportunity to go over there last Tuesday at about five o'clock. And I didn't see as much traffic as I expected to see, but I did get an appreciation for the, the environment. The street is very narrow. People, people were walking up and down the streets. Couple of, couple of parents with, with baby carriages, number of bikers. And I can see when, when that road is busy, how difficult it would be to, to walk in, to have people driving by. And it's also a very automobile dense area. There's a lot of, lot of off-street parking, but not off-street parking. There're just a lot of automobiles over there. So not much value in that comment, except to say that unless we can improve the infrastructure, it's, it's going to be difficult to, to put the kind of density that we're talking about in that, on that site. It's just really the automobile dense, very narrow streets. There are sidewalks, but they're only like partial sidewalks. And where they're partial sidewalks, they're only on one side of the street.
It's a bit like East Market Street in a way, without the on-street parking.
Yeah, if I could jump off that point and maybe even show a spreadsheet, since you know, I love those. So, I mean, to me, I, I think it's already a dangerous situation. I think there are obviously a ton of people walking and biking up and down that street. We've heard it from tons of public commenters just now. We know that street is like 80% renters. So happens, I know someone who used to live in Stribbling and they didn't have a car. And like, we've also heard, oh, it's really far from, you know, amenities and transit. But you can't really have both of those, right? The fact that we have so many people walking and biking shows how well-connected, because of its proximity to such important things, it is. And, you know, yes, it's 12 minutes, a 12-minute walk from the bus stop at JPA, but that's like the best-served bus stop in the entire city. It's got like five different UTS lines and the free trolley all on it. And on the other side, we've got Fontaine Research Park going through this big expansion. And so, you know, to me, and I think it's way past due for these sidewalks to have happened. I, I think we should have funded them a long time ago regardless. But to me, this project is, I think, the way to make it happen. So if you, if you put in 169 units here and you conservatively say they're 200, assessed at $200,000 each, right? Then we're going to get $320,000 a year in tax revenue. And then, you know, 40% of that goes to the schools per the agreement. So we've got a little less than 200,000 left. Remember, this is a low ball because the assessments are probably going to be higher. So that amount of tax revenue can finance $2.9 million worth of bonds. We learned from the debt issuance yesterday at City Council, they told us that every $10 million worth of bonds at 1.6% is going to cost $660,000 a year in debt service for 20 years. And then all the money is, is free for council to do all they want, whatever they want. And that's, so, you know, that's money in addition to this proper cash lump sum, which I think all comes, you know, at the very beginning and actually has extra value because we don't have to use it for the bonds for a while. And, and so we can finance these sidewalk improvements and stormwater improvements and still have money left over after financing the schools, still have money left over to do what we want. And, and that's something could look like, you know, a 10% increase in our entire CSRAP, our rental assistant voucher program. They could be any other council priority on top of giving this neighborhood the infrastructure improvements it's needed for a really long time. But that's not a guaranteed outcome. And I think a couple of commenters pointed that out, and it's a good point. You know, council has to agree to put it into the CIP and stop leaving it on the unfunded list. And I think if we let this go through, it's incumbent on us to review the CIP and the council who actually decides what goes in to actually make it happen because it, it pays for itself and more. And it could be a win-win-win combination, but it could also provide or create this like onerous burden and make the whole problem even worse if we just do nothing and keep all the money to ourselves. Or it can be, you know, not very useful land that lies fallow for the next couple of decades instead. Or we can get, you know, 60 large expensive units on it like we see, you know, in Krista Court and Oaklawn and Porter. And I don't see that as a good outcome either. And I don't necessarily think that the infrastructure, the sidewalks need to be like done by the time they break ground here. But certainly by the time it's, you know, even a few years in, by the time it's like half-full, you know, you're at that point, passing the point where the buy right would have created traffic there. And I think by that point, we really need to have these sidewalks done.
So a couple of, a couple of my colleagues have texted me and asked me if we can just focus on the questions we've got. And then we can segue into, into the, the kind of conversation you're having. So are there any more questions for the applicant or, or staff?
I do. Yes. Transportation demand management, something everybody wants to talk about. I'm seeing a lot of space for people to store their trucks. I worry that if you build it, they will come. More space for trucks means more trucks on the road. How do you make my nightmare not to come true?
I might have to give you, give that some thought and, and get you a more comprehensive answer at a later date. We certainly could include bicycle storage facilities too. That fits well with the, the goals here. We need to consider whether these are marketable today without as much parking. We can't build something today planning for a buyer that doesn't currently exist. Banks wouldn't like this very much. But I'd, I'd like to give that some thought and, and see what we can figure out on that exact question.
And Charlie, I, I'm looking at the site plan and, and I, I understand that you haven't had a landscape architect involved yet. But still, it concerns me to see this, instead of a, a development that's integrated with its neighbors and the site around, instead I'm seeing walls of wax magnolias around the perimeter on this, on this, the, the property line, creating barriers between this development and whatever else is around it. Is that the intent of, of what you're doing instead of looking to integrate it with the surrounding?
No, honestly, that's what happens when your engineer does, takes a stab at a landscape plan for the purposes of demonstration. So I, I wouldn't pay any attention to species or specific buffer designs there, but the intent was to provide some sort of visual buffer. The neighbor to the east in particular asked for that and wanted to have some separation. She has since moved and sold her house and somebody else is there, but I don't, so I don't know if the new resident would want the same. But that's the, the origin of that particular buffer on that side. I'd prefer a more native and varied buffer style that does create some visual separation, privacy, but not a barrier. We're not looking for a wall of Leland Cypress necessarily there for a lot of reasons.
Good. Because I was just questioning the intent with your, your development and I'm glad to hear that. Thank you. There's also way too few trees on the streets here. So 30 to 40 feet apart, we can do better than that.
Noted.
Okay.
Other questions? Any comments? Anything else? Rory, Rory, any comments?
I have a brief comment. I didn't say anything nice about the housing. You've been really responsive on the comments on housing. Our housing situation is much worse now than it was last time we talked about this. More heartened to see it now.
I will leave you some final comments. So for you all, the task is going to be taking a look at this vacant land in the city and deciding whether we can work with city CIP, get funding somewhere to be able to develop this in a dense enough place where housing is in a definite shortfall in the city, one. Or it is just decided that this is a by-right use. Look, I get it. I live over here near CityWalk. And my morning coffee used to be looking across the tracks at a lot of trees and green space. And a by-right development came in, which was city space. We don't call it that. Not city space, CityWalk. We call it something else, but that's beside the point. So your task as you go forward is going to be to take a look at this and go, is the by-right development? Because land is at a premium in this landlocked city, right? So is the by-right development better than trying to come up with some solutions, finding funding? And the city's got to be a partner with you on this, Charlie. I mean, they, because clearly there's infrastructure that's got to be in place. So if we want housing in the city, the city, and I said this in August of last year, this is not new information that I didn't say then. But you've got to take a look at this to say, and maybe the city partners with you enough that there's more affordable housing on this project. But to think that we're going to have a piece of land this large that continues to go undeveloped, because this can be developed by, by right. The other thing is, is as a commission, we look at things, it, you know, will this be developed better with a PUD than it is by right? Because with a PUD, we get to look at a lot of things like stormwater and streets and preserving critical slopes and making sure, Jody, that there's enough trees in the area. With the by-right development, you all don't get to weigh in on that. And I say you all, because this is, this is your task at hand at some point to come through. But that's the kind of things that, that y'all need to take a look at. But, but Charlie, I would also take a look at that matrix, right? While I appreciate personally, based off of some, you know, previous PUDs you all have done, ended up in a hotel. And I thought we were going to have something different. I won't ever forget that. Take a look at that matrix and make sure that what's in that matrix as a by-right use is actually what you guys want to see there. Because there are some things there that you may not want to see. So as you look at this PUD that comes before you, definitely don't forget to look at that matrix for the by-right uses that could still be. Because once you rezone it, as many conversations as we have, or you all were going to have about what's going to be there, it could change on a dime to another by-right use in that matrix because it's just a rezoning. That's my comments.
Thank you. Who the odds?
I would love to have feedback if anybody has reviewed the matrix. If there's anything that people saw as undesirable, either, either something that was included or not included. That can be now or anytime along the way as we continue through the process.
Anyone have any immediate feedback on the matrix?
I looked through it briefly and I didn't see any issues. It looked actually really conservative to me, perhaps because of these comments, which seems reasonable, but I haven't like done a, you know, the really detailed look.
Yeah, we could iterate through that, Charlie.
Also didn't go through it too deeply. It looked fairly similar to R1, R2, except libraries are gone. I don't know why you don't like libraries. But surface parking lot as an accessory use definitely concerns me. And I'm not sure how it would be valid, given the PUD, since you'd have to fundamentally change the, I think it's the proper development plan in that it shows underground or, you know, podium parking.
I would say take a close look at the home stays when you're talking about an impact on the neighbor. You're already impacting the neighbors with this amount of new homes in the area with an infrastructure issue that you've already got transportation-wise and, and traffic-wise. But when you add home stays where you've got constant in and out, that might be something you want to take a look at.
Yeah, I don't personally see a need to make it more restrictive than general R1 on home stays. But this is something I've said before, the use matrix on Unicode that says it's by right is not right. It should be a P for provisional use permit. I think last time it came up, we decided that even though it says B, you still need to have a provisional use permit. And as long as that's true, I'm fine with it. So hopefully that's still the case.
Ms. Dow, any puts?
My final comments would be I do agree with Lisa. We do have to, where apples are oranges here, do we want just a by-right development that really satisfies the needs and wants of the community? Or do we, I mean, excuse me, that doesn't necessarily satisfy the needs and wants of the community and does not give us a desirable, affordable housing that we seek for? Or are we going to try to figure this out to make it beneficial for everyone? And I'm hoping that we choose the latter.
So Bill, this is over there by the U. Anything?
Sure. I, I think the density is, is commendable. And it, it's interesting when you look at the aerial perspective, they showed, you know, there, it, it feels like this is a, a remote part of the city in some respects. And in some cases it is, but then you go across the city line and there's a big kind of apartment complex there. Not sure which one that is, but it's in the county. And so it's not like there's not a precedence of density here. And like you said, it is close to Fontaine and, you know, in general, the, the rest of the university through the bus line. It's not too far away. Beyond like the relationship to the university, I think some of the things that, one thing that popped in my head that just because of maybe with COVID, I'm noticing being at home a lot is all the delivery vehicles that, that tend to come with development and stuff. And, you know, with this tight kind of road network with a lot of stub, stubbing streets and stuff, there maybe we want some thought, want to be some thought put into how you, how you safely and efficiently accommodate that large amount of, you know, delivery volume throughout the day that, that's become ubiquitous with our life. But, but yeah, I, I thought Lisa's comments were really good. You know, you think about, there is a fair amount of, you know, in some ways, leverage that the city might have in, in achieving some of its goals with a project like this. It would be nice if this was right, more in the middle of the city, closer to the infrastructure, but, but it's not. So, but there may be a way of bringing that infrastructure to it. So I'll just leave it there.
I, I have a question for Mr. Palmer on that. I recently reviewed the University of Virginia Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan, which doesn't even include the research park. I, I think I was looking at ones years and years old, like a decade old.
Yeah, I believe that was like 2005 or something.
That sounds right. Do you know, is the research park going to be considered in infrastructure improvements by the, by UVA?
And what's, well, I mean, we have the Fontaine Master Plan proposes some bike peg connections, even, I believe, a, a span across Fontaine to get bikes and pedestrians there. We realize that's key to bringing students to that site. If it's going to be a research facility that, you know, that would have grad students and engineering students and stuff. Also, you know, the smart scale project is bringing that infrastructure closer, but it's only bringing to the city line. So, you know, we're looking at that as well. And if we did any additional development there, you know, bridging that gap. So yeah, I mean, definitely. It will be a part of the Fontaine redevelopment would be providing safe bike and pedestrian access to that site.
Reverend Eaton, jump in there.
Yeah, I, I was going to kind of concur with Bill about the density and the, and the direction that the city needs to go to mitigate our housing issues. But I also wanted to say to Mr. Armstrong, it seems to me from public comment that it might behoove you to put some creative thought into what Jody referred to as the perimeter feeling of this development, that perhaps some of your creativity could be put into how this development interacts with its neighbors. You know, because it seems like an opportunity to then engage with the, the existing community that's there that, you know, will, will naturally not want more density. So what Jody said about, go ahead, go ahead and, and, and put some energy into what does, what does it look like to the neighbors? What are these people going to be friends about? Is the UPS guy and the Amazon truck gonna? What are these people going to be friends about? Is the UPS guy and the Amazon truck gonna be able to move from one of, one of these subdivisions to the other? So I, I think that would go a long way toward kind of helping the, the city embrace its need for density. But also the, the relational, uh, connections between existing subdivisions and new subdivisions. So put a little thought, I, I, I think, I would, I would think that would be time and energy and creativity well spent.
Jody, anything else?
Oops, trying to find my unmute. There it is. So I've said mostly what I, I've thought, but, um, I think in conclusion, it would, to me, it would be unconscionable to, um, approve this P U D development as much as it appeals to me because of its traditional layout. And, and the design of it and its thoughtfulness, uh, and how it takes advantage of P U Ds. But unless we knew that scribbling was going to be improved. I, I don't know how we could have, uh, uh, approve this, um, as an island and, 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 um, not take into consideration that the neighbors and the people affected by it along scribbling. So somehow a partnership needs to be worked out with the city to ensure the fact that scribbling is improved. Uh, when this development, um, uh, starts to go in. In my mind.
And where are you, any, uh, thoughts?
I think I pretty much said it earlier. Um, I definitely agree with what, uh, Mr. LaHendra just said. That the infrastructure does need to get in there, um, at some point. Um, and even if this development weren't to happen, um, it needs to happen. So, uh, I hope that we as a city can take this chance, um, to, uh, really pursue the goals, uh, that we've set for ourselves in the past. Um, and to give back to the neighborhood as part of it, um, and create these much needed improvements.
So I, I got nothing more to add. I, I think I'd rather see a P U D than a buy right development. But we can't do the P U D unless we, we work with the city to improve the infrastructure. And no matter what you do, whether it be buy right or, um, whether it be P U D, we need to make certain that we do all the things we need to do to protect slopes and protect Moore's Creek. Charlie, I don't know if we've been helpful. What are the, any other questions? Anything else we can answer this point?
This has been tremendously helpful and you, you all have, uh, given a lot more of your time tonight than I expected. So thank you for that. And, uh, I'm very grateful.
Great. We've got one more agenda, but before I move on to that, uh, I want to welcome Liz. Welcome. Glad to have you on board. Looking forward to getting you engaged.
Thank you. I'm happy to be here.
And Chair, I would like to thank Brennan and Jack, uh, with the city staff for being here, uh, to help us through this. That was, they, they're here because of our, uh, uh, requests. So thank you very much Brennan and Jack.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Jody, for remembering to do that.
Anytime.
Right, we are back to the entrance corridor for Chick-fil-A.
Mr. Chair, may I, um, raise one question here? So earlier this evening, uh, I received a request, uh, Mr. Blair and I received a request and we were, we were, uh, told that Ms. Russell wasn't able to attend. And since her appointment as your new commissioner didn't have an associated start date with it, we advised everyone that it would be fine for Ms. Green to participate. Uh, so before you go into any matters, uh, where there would be a vote required, I'd like to, um, settle who will be voting and who will just be listening. I think since we began the meeting with Ms. Green as, as, uh, a continuing commission member, that it would make some sense for her to participate as the actual member for this meeting and for Ms. Russell to, to listen if, if that's okay with everyone.
Yeah, unanimous agreement.
Great. Carry on.
Hope this won't be too controversial.
And just, just want to remind Mr. Mitchell, you, you probably are on top of this, but you'll need to gavel in and gavel out.
What am I gavel? Oh, into the ERB. Thank you. No, I wasn't. Thank you. All right, we are gavelling out of the, um, the regular meeting and we're now gaveling into.
I can't think of a better way to end my time, my 10 years here in an ERB meeting.
Well, guess what? We're now gaveling to the ERBB. So, um, Jeff, where are we? What, what, what have you learned? When you did your research, you did some research. What did you learn?
I, 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 I do want to just offer, um, to Lisa, you know, I've known Lisa a long time. I haven't known her in this role except the last three years. But I remember I hadn't been on the job maybe a month and Lisa leaned over the dais and asked me, so in your professional opinion, what do you think? And I, 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 you know, I didn't even know the acronyms meant yet for a year base. So Lisa, thank you for all your help all these years. So where are we? I, you know, I talked to, to Joey afterwards and I don't know if he's still, um, lingering, but you know, the decision's really yours. And I guess sort of in my reference to when, you know, Lisa asked me, you know, in my opinion, what do I, I think, uh, my professional opinion and my, you know, planning opinion, design opinion is that, um, light glare is a significant issue in this town. And I also know that engineers can solve problems if you give it to them. And so what we've asked is that, um, that these lights at this, the new building, or at least in my opinion, that these new lights be, have the ability to be, um, dimmed, um, if, if requested and that they, they meet, uh, the, the color temperature criteria that we've laid out. And, um, I think that's, um, and if the applicant doesn't believe that can be done, um, then that's, that's your all's decision, uh, to make, but that's my position. And, um, you know, I would, I would recommend that, you know, we as a community, these are the, uh, design and aesthetic criteria that we, we want to work towards. And I, I think we should say this, you know, this is what we want to see for this new, um, this new, uh, business in this new location. So I'll leave it at that.
I just had a quick question, um, because Jeff, I don't know if you remember, I think we had a project not too long ago, it was maybe a little while now, but, um, still recently where we had this issue with lighting and we required that they use a dimmer. That they, they had to install some type of dimming lighting. So I'm okay with that. My question is, what are we going to put in place so that it's not just up in the air? If one resident thinks, oh, it's too bright versus another one says it's not. I think we need to have some clear procedure of how we determine what is a light nuisance? Or what is going to have to trigger them to dim their lights?
Well, you know, my understanding, you know, people don't, um, I mean, we get the phone calls, um, we got a lot of them. Um, we get the emails, um, you know, at, uh, on West Main Street with that, um, the building on the west side of the bridge, on the north side. Uh, we simply asked, well, if you can't dim them, then turn them off. Now, um, you know, you, you, a question that, you know, maybe is for a, 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 another session is what is, you know, what are our capabilities as, you know, via the zoning officials, enforcing certain things, but at least it gives us a, uh, in my opinion, a, a, a tool use. And that would be, you know, if they say, you know, look, we installed lamping that does not exceed 3,000 K and we installed lamping that's dimmable, uh, as you asked. And I would, you know, have to say, well, then they did what we asked. But with the information as it's been submitted, I, you know, I, um, I would want to see a cut sheet for that fixture that, that, that meets that criteria. And absent that, then, then this condition would cover it. Now, as far as, you know, what, how, how we as city staff would respond to a complaint, um, I mean, I know how we have, um, we have not just simply gone in and said, you know, hey, the lady across the street called, you know, there's, there's an honest assessment and an evaluation of it. And, um, you know, I don't, that's about what I can offer you.
Yeah, typically what happens with a lighting violate, violation request is some, someone contacts us and let it, lets us know that they have a concern. Um, so then we investigate it. Um, actually, uh, Craig Fabio, who was on here earlier, um, does lots of those and has been doing quite a few during the, uh, during the emergency, state of emergency here, because folks are noticing it a lot more than they were before. Um, and they go out that, uh, with the light monitor, they, they determine whether it's within the criteria, whether it's facing the manner that it needs to. And, uh, if there is a concern, uh, typically the first step is reaching out to the property owner or, or, whoever is the, the management for that specific site to try and work with them first. Um, and then if, uh, that goes to no avail, then it goes through a zoning violation process.
A question on that, when you go out to do a measurement, so it's a, it's a light meter and you go out to do a measurement, this is dark sky compliant. So if there's a glare and it doesn't meet the, uh, lumens at the property line, I'm, I'm assuming that's where that is measured. Then is that a matter of it, it's either dimmable or then it has to have, have a shield installed?
Um, there, there's different ways it can be addressed as you, as you well know. And, um, you know, typically our staff will work with the, the individual to, to make it work. You know, sometimes if it's, if it's a, a larger, business, they, they have experience with that, but sometimes our smaller, uh, places don't. And so, uh, it just kind of depends on what their, uh, capability is. But, um, you know, the, the I, the ideal is to get it into compliance and it's something that's, it's either in compliance or it's not in compliance. And if it's not in compliance, then people know and they let us know.
So, um, that distinction seems a little bit different from what we're talking about, um, in this ERB condition, right? Like I think if it's clearly not in compliance with the lighting ordinance, regardless of any ERB condition, uh, you know, staff can enforce that, right? Uh, it sounds like their issue, um, is that beyond the lighting ordinance, and the objective measure of 3,000 K, which I think is good. It's, well, if you get any reasonable public complaint, um, then you must take action. Um, and reasonable public complaint, uh, seems like a nebulous and subjective concept. Arguably reasonable and public don't really go together. So that's where my proposal earlier to just say, well, staff has to agree, um, because I trust staff, uh, more than random person creating complaining about light, uh, seemed like a solution. Um, but I would be open to other potential solutions.
What Missy just said is if they have a complaint, they investigate. And then if it meets, if it is not in compliance, then they have the options.
Well, so I guess you could say it's an unreasonable complaint if it's in compliance with the lighting ordinance. Um, but it seems like without the condition, you could still investigate to see if it's in compliance, right?
Well, we investigate either way. I mean, and, and there are a number of lighting investigations we do where it is not a violation. Um, but there's also the good neighbor aspect of things. And we found that a lot of businesses want to be good neighbors. And so they work with our staff and they help them and they make adjustments, um, because everyone has to live together. It, it may be that there's some words missing to that condition that, uh, can get it to something that, uh, will, will allow folks to, to move forward with that. You know, it, we, we've, we have definitely found that, uh, providing this language has been very helpful when all of the lighting gets out there and it's there. And if there are any problems with it, it's a lot easier to hit a dimmer button than it is to have to retrofit.
So let me just, let me just say something as a person who, who's gone out of and enforced lighting in the county for nineteen and a half years. The, we have an ordinance that talks about, uh, and, and, and I think it's very close, the city and the county are very close. So we have an ordinance that talks about a spillover, which is the light that spills over the property line and glare, right? So when a, when a lighting engineer looks at these, uh, they're looking at it in a, um, I, I want to, I, I think it's more of a vacuum because, because they're looking at it on flat ground.
Right, right.
There's not a lot of, there's, the lighting engineers don't look at the, the overall, um, photography and what's surrounding it. So when you're doing a lighting plan and you're reading a lighting plan and you're looking at this and you're like, yep, that isn't, that's going to comply because it's on flat paper, flat ground. Where the problems come in, in our community, and, and this is what I was trying to say earlier is th- this particular establishment is at one grade. And where you've going to have residential concerns is at the higher grade and would be on the same plane as where the lights are. So that's where you would mostly, or, or right under. So you're not talking about being able to control or, or engineer a plan for the surrounding grades around. And that's where we have a lot of problems in the county. And so then we'll come in and, and, and a lot of businesses do want to be good neighbors, right? Cause I'm not going to sell whatever to the folks that could walk down every day and if, if I'm not being a good neighbor, right? So a, and then you're asking them to go back in, bring in a, a bucket lift or whatever and, and, uh, put shielding on specific lights. So I, I have a little experience with this. And, and I'm just saying, take a look at this. It's easier to add this stuff at the beginning than it is to have a lot of neighbors on the street where, you know, now I'm looking at a light that didn't exist and there's no way to fix it. And, and we have an opportunity to make it right at the beginning. And that's, that's, that's why I'm saying, take a look at it now. Because there are solutions.
And so the understanding is that, uh, you know, and this is, uh, technology is, is pacing, it's, is running ahead of our ordinances. Our ordinances were written for light bulbs. We don't use, you know, if you use light bulb around an architect anymore, you get smacked. Um, a, a, a wonderful example is go walk in the downtown mall and there's the Farmers and Merchants Bank has a, an LED fixture over their ATM. And it looks like light is blasting out of the mall. I get calls and emails about that all the time. I've talked to them and they said, hey, we put in what you guys told us to, we're not doing anything. So I'm sort of stuck. Now, I'm not trying to be difficult with Ryan and, and the folks at Chick-fil-A. I, I think my understanding, my, what I've learned and from folks on the B A R, they're very tuned into lighting is that, um, the 3,000 K max and dimmable, you, you know, even 3,000 K is almost one of those where you're not going to have a problem. The dimmable provides that, 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 you know, extra if you need it. But you, you're with just those two provisions, you're, you're pretty much there. We have three banks coming through to our administrative review. And I told the applicant that if they didn't like my condition about this, they could bring it to the ERB. So they opted to work with me to, um, make sure that the, 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 these light is concerned are taken care of. One is at Barracks Road, the other one is over on Long Street by Berlin Moran, which we were very concerned about, given that that's not a well lit area and you've got traffic coming and they were putting in lights that were just exceedingly bright. So we've, we've sort of working with those three app, well, one applicant, but those three projects kind of has overlapped into this. And this is sort of the similar circumstances. I'm, I'm okay. I understand the, the situation with trying to have a, you know, not, you know, a very clear, this is, you know, it's zero or one, it's black or white, it's yes or no. I understand that. And, and, um, so. not, you know, a very clear, this is, you know, it's zero or one, it's black or white, it's yes or no. I understand that. And, and, um, so, and given that it's in Barracks Road Shopping Center, um, you know, there's probably lights all over that place that are, are of issue. But I, I think I do, um, you all can, and I, you know, encourage you to come up with any language that you prefer for the second piece of that, but the, the, the key condition is the, the 3,000 K and, and a dimmable fixture. And, and with that, um, I think we're a long way there. And then, um, I'll go back to what I said at the beginning of the meeting. I think the city really needs a comprehensive lighting plan that adjusts, that addresses these issues, not just in the ADCs or the ECs. So that way we have something that everybody's working on the same page. With that, I'll stop talking.
Well, the other part to that is, is Barracks Road is an established sort of place. And I don't think they've switched everything over to LED yet as well. So when you've got all the whatever is there now, which is more of a yellow hue and you add a new establishment with new fixtures and new, um, lighting of LED, while it may meet the ordinance, it's shot, it, it is like a, a sore thumb sticking out and, and you are, and for sure going to get calls. We get calls all the time when folks change out their fixtures to LED.
So, Ms. Creasy, I've lost track of what we're trying to achieve with this application.
Well, um, you, you all had, you all had the, the single, uh, condition that was of concern. Um, you all have the option of having, uh, we've, we've got our applicants here. They can provide some background. Um, if you needed a staff report for this, uh, you know, we can provide that information. Um, it's, you know, it's, it's really in you guys' court as to how you would like to move forward with the discussion.
Mr. Stolzner.
So, um, I'd say, uh, Mr. Warner and Ms. Green have me fairly convinced. Um, and I'm certain at this point that paying those two guys to stay here for the last four and a half hours has cost more than dimmable fixtures. Um, so, uh, I, can we briefly recognize them for no more than two minutes? Uh, just to say what their problem still is? Yes, then vote on something.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Rory. This is Ryan Yager with Bowler. I definitely appreciate that and I appreciate the, uh, the, the discussion back and forth. Um, I had definitely a lot of things prepared to say, but a lot of it's already been said. And quite frankly, I agree with a lot of everything that's been said. Uh, there's different nomenclature that we have concerns with. Um, and kind of the first one being the dimmable aspect of it. How many, we already mentioned, uh, here that the city does not necessarily have the ordinance caught up with technology to govern by as far as requiring dimmable light fixtures and such. We are meeting the city ordinance. We are in compliance to the city standards for the zoning ordinance, compliance to the overall shopping center standards. And we feel that we are trying to be good neighbors. We're not trying to submit an application that is not in compliance. However, the, the dimmable aspect of it would be at a detriment in isolating to only our single pad, single tenant use here, rather than a standardized approach for the whole city. So very willing to accommodate to any city regulations that are in place. Um, however, we, we feel like this is above and beyond. Um, secondly, kind of speaking on that and specifically Jeff with your staff report, and, and please correct me if I'm wrong. Per our back and forth, we were really discussing a dimmable aspect of a fixture, more of an interior fixture of a recessed bulb as part of the canopy ordering system and the canopy lighting that would be blocked by the roof of the canopy because it's essentially underneath the roof at that point. Um, so you would not have any of the issues, at least to your point of the, uh, the actual neighboring, uh, adjacent residential properties seeing from above, because it's basically underneath that canopy. Um, you had not mentioned actually dimming the light pole fixtures for the parking areas. Um, however, in the motion, it was a, a universal dimming of all lights on the property. So that's just the little, the nuance there. We can certainly look into dimming the, the canopy, even though it's not preferred, we're meeting lighting levels from the city. We can look in dimming fixtures for the canopy itself. Um, but as far as the parking lots, the, the, the taller lights, that's our concern. Um, and then secondly, you hit the nail on the head as far as the, um, subjectivity in that second statement of, um, by agreeing to the motion is written, even with the modification by yourself, Rory. Uh, it, it leaves the end users operator to the future subjectivity of the opinion of an individual or even the opinion of the individual, even if it's a public member or a city staff member. But to lean on the zoning ordinance and the lighting levels and the photometric readings and the standards that we have in place, that's raw data and quantitative features. By all means, it's, it's our opinion that we are going to build, you know, a site plan approved with a approved photometric, build that site plan, build a photometric and adhere to it. And if for some reason post-construction, it does not adhere to that standard, we are happy to oblige and revise that. It's just going based on a quantifiable city standard rather than the, uh, the ambiguous. Uh, I don't think it's, 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 it's too bright. Therefore I want it to be dimmed to a, a arbitrary level. So in closing, I definitely appreciate your time. Um, the two things were really maybe isolating the dimming features to, if needed at all, to where they originally intended by the staff report to be for the canopy recessed bulbs only, as well as lean on the zoning ordinance for the standard of fixing in the future rather than an arbitrary amount was our only objection. But we do definitely appreciate your time and, and open any other clarifying discussion.
Personally, I have no issue with restricting the, uh, can, uh, the canopy bulb only. That seems reasonable to me. Resess bulbs only.
So I feel like there's kind of a disconnect there because I would think that it's the ones that aren't within the canopy that we care about. Those are the actually exterior ones. And I think, um, what Mr. Warner was referencing was that all of the non-canopy ones, uh, have fixtures available that are dimmable. Um, so they can just buy those off the shelf, the same, same picture, they have lamps available that are dimmable. Um, and then the canopy one potentially didn't. In which case I'd be fine with exempting it since it's inside, but it sounds like it does anyway. Um, but.
That's correct. Rory, you're correct. That, that was my understanding is that by looking at these, the information that was available, that all of the fixtures had a type available that came with the, um, the 3,000 K lamp and, and a dimming control. Now, I'll, I'll be honest, I'm, I'm not an electrical engineer. So the, you know, what, what's being dimmed and how it's dimmed. I'm relying on what some of the experts on the B A R have, how they've shaped this, this discussion. And, and, um, and so when it was, I looked at what light fixtures, um, listed, it was the only one that didn't meet that were, uh, the, the canopy lights at the drive-through. Um, so, so I, my intent was that all of the fixtures would have the 3,000 K and, and the dimmable as it seemed that they were available that way. So, but if it's, if there's a, you know, and I, we're going through this right now with the Belmont Bridge where I think every other week, there's a different light fixture that, you know, goes off the market and another one comes on. So I mean, if this is, that's where I, you know, count on the engineers. If this is really, you know, a bridge too far, tell us. I, I, I certainly don't want to make someone go out and invent a light fixture.
Mr. Chair, I have a motion.
That would be a wonderful thing.
Thank you, Jody. Thank you.
Having considered the standard set forth within the city's entrance corridor design guidelines, I move to find that the proposed design for the Chick-fil-A at 1,000 Emmett Street North is consistent with the guidelines and compatible with the goals of this entrance corridor. And that the ERB approves the certificate of appropriateness application as submitted with the following conditions. The four existing magnolia trees along Emmett Street shall be maintained and protected from damage during construction. Two, the requirement that all door and window glass be clear, not less than 70% V L T. Three, the prohibition of signage on the outdoor umbrellas and requiring that they be of a uniform color. And four, exterior light fixtures shall have lamping that is dimmable and have a color temperature not to exceed 3,000 K. Additionally, the owner will re, address any reasonable public comments about light glare by either dimming the lamp or replacing the lamps slash fixtures.
Is there a second?
I second.
Uh, moved and proper second. Ms. Creasy, would you, uh, poll or? You're on mute. You're still muted. There we go. Okay.
There we go. All right. Um, Mr. LaHendra.
Hi.
All right, Mr. Heaton.
Hi.
Ms. Green?
You're on mute, Lisa.
Hi.
Mr. Solly Gates?
Hi.
Mr. Stolinsberg? You're on mute, sir.
Hi.
And Ms. Dow?
Hi.
And then Mr. Mitchell?
And I. Right? The, uh, motion is passed. Is there any other business you'd like to discuss?
You can gavel, gavel out and gavel back in.
Round of ERB, we're back in the regular meeting. Uh, any business, the business, Ms. Dow, do you have a motion?
Can hear you. Of course. Um, I'd like to say great work tonight, guys. I know we had a kind of a long meeting, but I do feel like it was productive today. Um, not saying that our other meetings are not productive, but this one felt super productive and just not a run on. Um, but if all minds are clear and all hearts are fulfilled, I would like to, um, make a motion that we recess until the second Tuesday in October.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Good night, guys.
Hi, everyone. Thank you. Take care, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa.
Good luck, Liz.
Thank you, Lisa. Welcome us.